I'd like to call to order the Cuphead County Planning Commission meeting for the month of April. We welcome you all here. Some of you might be already aware, but whenever a storm comes up, or whenever we have ice, or different things, and the power goes out, we look for a person called Liman. And this month is, well, this week, I think it is, is Liman Appreciation Month. So, I just wanted to take that time out and just remind all of us that the reason we can go home in a storm, or something like that, and it goes out, and we know that, we don't have to worry, because whether it's Dominion, REC, or whoever it is, they're working on getting it back on for us. But I just wanted to make everyone acknowledge, be aware of that. There's so many things we say appreciation for, but this is something that's definitely big, and just wanted to take that time out to do that. So, thank you for your ear on that. Second item on the agenda is approval of tonight's agenda, so.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved. Approval of our minutes from our March 8th meeting. We received those. Have you viewed them? Any other concerns? If not, Chair entertain a motion to put it to record?
So moved.
Second.
All right. No need to vote on this. We put it to record. At this time now, we go to what we call the meat of the meeting, okay? And we will have our new business. Neil, we'll turn it over to you at this time, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. First item on the agenda is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, ZTA-9-23-1. I'll read through the synopsis here. The Planning Commission will consider a revision to Appendix A, the zoning ordinance of the county code. The proposed revision is to Article 7, 1A, Light Industry, Industrial Park District, LI, Section 7.1A, excuse me, 7 dot 1A dash 9, building height. The current industrial maximum height limit is 45 feet. In Article 9.2, under special provisions, there are exceptions for certain types of structures that are allowed up to an additional 15 feet in height. This language is proposed to remain the same. The Planning Commission will consider a max height limit amendment to 75 feet in the light industrial zoning district. This increase in height will allow for potential better utilization of existing industrial zoning districts. This is supported by planning efforts to help direct and encourage industrial inquiries to locate their business and projects on property that have previously been zoned and planned for industrial use. The Planning Commission will determine whether the proposed ordinance amendment is necessary to further the general purpose of promoting health, safety, and general welfare of the public, and other purposes as found in Code, Virginia Code, Section 15.2, 2283, and 2285.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, there's no applicant for this. The county is entertaining this on its own accord for a potential code amendment that would change the max height limit, as Neil read, for the light industrial zoning districts from 45 to 75. It's a fairly simple code amendment, but, you know, fairly significant change, too. The light industrial primarily centered around town. We do have some out in the county. Two things for record, one already cleared up, there's not a specific applicant. In your package, there was an interest request for that data center usage that would like to go even higher than 75. That's not an applicant. They're just showing interest in that, you know, to do that. The other thing that I wanted to bring out, out in front, is that the recent data center that was approved for light industrial in Stevensburg, that this change would not apply to that. That was a proffered rezoning that was done at 45 feet, and that remains the same until the board would actually, the board would have to go through a public process to amend those proffers at this point. Just wanted to clear those two things up. That being said, Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned, the HI and the staff memo there, the HI district that we have today, which is your heavy industrial, does carry 75-foot limit today. We do have some utilization in our HI today at 75 feet, but usually on limited structures. We have structures in town that are around that height are a little bit taller than that height as well, that are also zoned industrial. The Rules Committee for the Board did review the request and referred it to the Planning Commission appropriately for consideration in public hearing tonight, and ultimately hopefully a recommendation from the Planning Commission. As Neil read in the add memo there, it is supported by planning efforts and staff's opinion to help direct and encourage industrial inquiries, basically to locate in our existing industrial zones. One thing that we did explore briefly, when you're talking about height, you do want to think about, obviously, public safety when you're regarding that. We have one aerial ladder truck in the county, does have the ability to reach up to 105 feet. Just wanted to let you all know that the effective reaches, as was pointed out in the staff memo, is less than that, when you take into account collapse zones around the building. But talking to the Fire and Rescue Association, they are comfortable that their current aerial unit could at least lay water down at that height, at 75 feet, with that aerial unit. It would, more than likely, at a large building scale, not just the height, but a large building scale at that height, probably would require more aerial units than what we have today, just as a side note. And that would have to come from area counties outside of Culpeper. That's just one thing that the staff wanted to bring out as far as a safety concern. Hopefully you all are thinking in that vein as well. We did do some research for surrounding localities as well, just to get a comparison. Right here in the town of Culpeper, your industrial height limit is around 70 feet, just under, if I understood their ordinance correctly. You see a kind of barrage of different ones across the area. In Piedmont, you see 45 feet, like we have here at Culpeper, as high as Orange, which is, I think, 100 feet. Spotsylvania is very similar to that. Not proposing, there are no proposed changes to the HI, and that would remain unchanged at 75 feet. This would be specifically for the light industrial zoning district. There are no proposed changes to Article 9, as was mentioned in the add as well, which is a special provision section, which also addresses height, and that's for equipment and things that go above the typical building height, that main roof limit, air-conditioning units, you know, things like that. Those, right now, could go an additional 15 feet above whatever the height limit for that district is, and that's proposed to remain unchanged. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to entertain any questions. As mentioned, there is no applicant. This is the county looking into this and potentially changing the height limit here.
Okay, thank you, Sam. To the commissioners, any discussion?
I have a question.
I have a question of staff. So, you're telling us that the equipment on top of the 75 feet, so it's, language maybe needs to say, not including equipment? It doesn't really spell out, the 75 feet, or doesn't need to? I don't know, I'm just saying that.
Yeah, I think, I think understanding your question, Commissioner Thornel, there's two separate articles. You have the base height limit in the actual zoning district, and that's what we're looking at potentially changing. Article 9, which is a special provision section of the zoning ordinance, talks about structures, and this would go for any zoning district, not just light industrial. At that height limit, there are certain types of things that can exceed that max height limit for the zoning district, and mainly for equipment purposes, basically, which you typically see that.
Correct. So, it's non-exc-
And that's not proposed to remain unchanged. So, right now, on the 45 feet, you could go up to 60 feet with equipment on top.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
And this would go to 90?
That's correct.
Anyone else?
So, is kind of a thought here to potentially be able to let buildings go taller to prevent sprawl in kind of a roundabout way? I mean, is that what we're looking at, trying to protect the land, or?
Yeah. I think that should be the main intent of this, and I think that's one way to look at it. I think that we have zoning districts in play today. Some have been used around town, some have not. We do have, most of those areas are around major highways. Most of those areas are around limited residential users. There are some that do have some residential uses next to them. But if we're going to utilize, as the comp plan directs and encourages industrial users to use those existing industrial areas, it makes sense, in my mind, from a planning standpoint, to try to maximize those to the fullest, without encouraging rezonings out and about through the county, which we've learned in recent years is not favorable and should not be favorable.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Yes.
Thanks, Nate. Sam, is there any way to apply this on a case-by-case basis? I can see where in some areas 75 feet would work, but in other areas, it might be out of character or inappropriate.
Yeah, not with the zoning ordinance, that would apply and should apply across the zoning district completely. Someone could potentially apply for a variance or modification, but in those cases, it would most likely go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and in that case, it would need to be a hardship request. Maybe if someone presents a real good case, they could get that, but I would find it doubtful that you would get a hardship approved for, to go up higher.
How about in the case of a rezoning, like with Amazon, rezoning from agricultural to lot industrial, can we proffer in, say, 45 feet, if it's deemed more appropriate for where that's going to be?
That's a, that's a great point, Commissioner Price. Yes, you can. And in those cases, if the area character is not appropriate for 75 foot, if it ends up being 75 foot, the board could accept a proffer that would be lower than that.
Yeah.
And that would be enforceable.
And one final thing, since we were talking about how this might apply to data centers. So, a data center with an additional floor, do we know if that would require additional air conditioners on the roof, which would lead to more noise, and that being a greater height could be a greater nuisance?
One could surmise that. I mean, I would make that, but I don't, I wouldn't be able to answer that question. But I would, I would imagine if you have more square footage that you're trying to air cool, then yes, you're going to need more equipment to do that.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay.
If I could, yes, if I could. We didn't get a, I would have liked to seen a map, and that's my fault for not, just to see where all the LI is towards residential and A1, and see where everything lays out. I'm not sold on doing 100%, 75% across the board. I know it kind of needs to be written that way. I'd like to see a conditional, depending on the view shed, because some people live where they live because of the view, so that's fair on that. And I, going up to 75 feet on a regular structure fire, you know, using the 105 truck that we had, if we're looking at a data center, that's like a three-alarm fire. That's, you know, that's, depending on the size of the building. So, I'd caution us to take that into mind, because a huge fire like that, one truck is not going to be able to handle. And I'm more concerned about who we're writing this for versus why we're writing this for, when it comes to who's going to apply for this, and the reason why we're doing it. So, just want to make that known. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to comment that, as we're discussing this, just studying a few other localities codes, if we were to go with 75 feet, do we need to protect adjacent residential parcels with additional language in this paragraph commenting on adverse impact on the light and air of adjacent properties? Mr. Price brings up the idea of increased noise, is that an issue? One jurisdiction recommends that the county fire marshal certifies in writing that a proposed building or other structure can be properly protected, and will not endanger improvements on adjacent properties in case of fire. So, I don't know if we need additional language to guide this, other than just changing that number.
You could take that approach. In other words, you could have a approach where if you're going to allow for a certain height that's higher, you could require a bigger setback, you know, on the ground. And that certainly is possible, and well within the amendment of the zoning, it would probably take a separate zoning amendment than what we have, obviously, proposed tonight. But you could do that. That would be a possibility.
Yeah, Nancy?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I would err on what some other jurisdictions do with, like bulk plane requirements and things like that. So, the height is limited based on where the property line is, and the plane that the building would see based on it. So, they'd set back the building until that plane would then work within that property line. But the gross floor area or net square footage isn't changing under the ordinance. It's the same maximum square footage that can be allowed, so.
That's correct.
It's just a matter of it being more compressed and more high, you just want to set it back.
Yeah.
So, I think to Walter's comment, I mean, the other thing would be the glare, you know, so if you have wall packs and lights on the top of the building, things like that, to make sure you're not having glare going across the property lines and things of that nature, I think would be important.
And to Commissioner Kilby's point, you know, that's something that we didn't discuss because it's not proposed to be changed, but the minimum green space requirement that's in the LI is, obviously, would still need to be met. The floor area ratio, you know, is not changing, is not proposed to be changed. You're not changing those things. So, the area character, you know, from that standpoint, wouldn't change, but it, you know, height, you definitely would notice.
Yes, Ms. Thornel.
So, in town, though, it is 75 feet?
I don't know if it can get twice to 75 feet, it's closer to 70.
70, plus equipment?
Yes.
So, in town seems to be a higher density, so what's the, I'm not sure that I agree with it being case-by-case. If we're going to have a light and zone, light industrial zoned area, then I think it should be consistent with, otherwise, we won't get that applicant, perhaps the town will.
And staff agrees with that position.
Yeah, I think, I don't see anything wrong with it. The building is set back off the boundary lines. When you do that, when it collapse, does it collapse in when it is on fire? I don't know. Is it going to go out?
Every emergency situation is unique, every emergency situation is unique. The building, you know, there is building code that addresses fire, there is fire code, there are certain standards. It's not like there are no standards. They do have to meet those on their own accord through the building code and through the separate fire code. You can address certain things through the zoning code that could help, you know, potentially a larger setback for a taller building, things like that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, going back to the fire, right now, if we're talking about one building that's 75 feet high, and we have one truck that can accommodate that. But if we change the ordinance, we're now opening it up to have several buildings, the possibility of several buildings that are going to be 90 feet high, only serviced by one truck. It seems to me that the more logical thing might be to do it on a case-by-case basis, and that's my perspective.
I think we should ask for a fire truck for every rezoning request.
Yeah, there's different ways to approach the-
And then, and then we're looking at the worst scenario that we could, you know, that we could have, that everything is going up in flames at one, you know, which we know we have to plan ahead for that, too, but, but at the same time.
I just want to add one more thing, and that is, reference to Commissioner Clancy's comment, it looks to me like the light industrial areas do border several residential areas. The heavy industrial doesn't. So, we're possibly impacting those residential areas by changing, you know, with the-
They're isolated, you know, there's one larger area, if you're looking at the zoning map, that looks like it's right next to industrial, existing industrial next to residential, and it is true. But the industrial, lot owner also owns a significant residential piece that's right there, that's intended to be used as a buffer against that subdivision. So, you can look at different things in the zoning map, but it, those details, you know, until you really get into it, looking at it, you're not going to pick up on that. That's the largest area where we have existing industrial, existing-
Oh, that's new, okay. All right.
This, the property that's known as Wing Spread, that's a big, large, undeveloped industrial area that's right there next to residential area off of Lover's Lane, they actually own a sizable undeveloped residential tract. And that's the same owner that owns the industrial tract, so. That's the largest, there are other areas, but that's the largest one, so. Just wanted to kind of point that out, because it is a unique situation.
I'm just going to comment, not to be opposite, but when I want to craft this language so it goes with regardless who owns, who owns the property. The parcels were right in for the land, right. But I understand your point about the substantial residential area.
So, you said the town is 70?
Yes.
So, I guess my question would be, why would we want to go five feet higher than town?
75 was chosen because it matches the existing heavy industrial. That's why that was chosen.
Okay.
That was, there wasn't, it wasn't just pulled out of thin air. It's, we have that, and has been on the books since probably 198, 1967, so. That's 75 feet.
Can someone on staff, refresh my memory, who has the 105-foot truck? Where that, what house is that located?
I don't know, Commissioner Clancy. We did reach out to Junior Pearman, and he's the one that verified that information, so. I think it's in town.
I'm surprised.
It needs a new location, if I'm not mistaken, so that's another thing we're going to be working on.
Yeah. Okay, anyone else? He says, Sam, we get to see this, you know, in a situation like that, the application comes to us anyway, right? And if we have these steps, if we do increase it to that point, we still have some say-so when it comes to us, right? Or it just stops with you, it stops with you once we?
No, Mr. Chairman, not if it's, if it's a rezoning request, yes, you would have the potential to look at it.
Yeah.
But we're talking about potentially impacting the districts that are undeveloped that are existing today. And in that case, they would just bring in a site plan, and if it met the standards, then it's going to get approved, so.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just let me ask. So, Sam, you're here in the discussion up here, so there's some concern about the impact of the 75-foot building near residential housing. Is there any additional work that you might could do with the language for the ordinance that, that might help alleviate some of these concerns, and maybe give us some flexibility in where these, the 75-foot limit is implemented?
We could look into that. We can look into that. I'm going to caution the Planning Commission, if it gets into where we have to caveat this and caveat that, then we just don't recommend you do it, because I don't want to complicate the zoning ordinance. And height is something that should remain pretty simple, as simple as possible. But we certainly can look into that.
Well, the advantage, though, is, like somebody mentioned, the fact that if we're, say we're talking data centers, or any other kind of development like that, if you're going up, you're taking away the pressure to go out. So, you're, you're keeping the footprints a little smaller, so it does help to contain sprawl. I mean, so, I mean, that's a big plus for this to me.
Yes.
Does, go ahead, Cindy.
Go ahead.
Does this also affect, I know that when we looked at some LI conditional use permits in the past for storage buildings, and then storage trucks, and the trucks couldn't be higher than the building, is this going to affect any of that?
So, that's, that's a great question, Commissioner Clancy. It could impact that, as far as a structure standpoint. A conditional use permit, though, we still have some leverage as far as if there's a use permit process. You could put a condition, especially for outdoor stores, for example, where there's not a structure that we're trying to get a height. If it's along a major interchange, which we've seen, right, the commission would have the ability through the conditional use permit process that is required today, to put a height limit on that. Structure-wise, maybe not, at that point, so.
Go ahead.
So, one more thing, we, we have around our county now several silos, Cargill Silos, Bingham &amp; Taylor, those pavilions and structures are more than 75 feet, I would think, or right there at it. We don't have any, and the one over at Bingham &amp; Taylor is right near a bunch of apartments.
Yeah.
I don't see what this is-
There are some existing industrial structures-
Right, so.
-that are definitely over, actually, 100 feet today.
Yeah, I really don't think it's, I would rather go up than out myself, so I would be okay with it.
One thing you did say was buffers and all, if, can be put in place, right? If it, if it does end up being close to the residential, something that-
And we have buffer requirements that are separate in the landscape ordinance today, where you have industrial against, and that would be a site plan consideration.
Right, right, right.
And if it were rezoning, then you can always go beyond whatever that minimum standard is, potentially, so.
Got you, sure. So, I feel, you know, it's something in place, and, you know, something that we can move also. But, okay, at this time, no other questions for staff?
One last question, and that is the, does anything in the building code have to be changed because of this, like in terms of sprinkling in the building and things like that?
Not that I'm aware of, no. Not that I'm aware of, no.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. At this time, we now in open to public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to speak to this application, please raise your hand, be recognized by the chair. No one? No, just kidding. Yes. Mr. Hey, give your full name, it's been a long time. We give our full name for the record, please.
Good evening. Don H. Stevensburg District.
Is that microphone on?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm very soft-spoken, sorry. Culpeper is a farming community, and there is a grain mill silo within earshot of this meeting here tonight. Please support Culpeper Farms. Take into consideration a building of that height, but it could be 20, 30, or 40 acres in width. Do we have the resources to put out a fire of that magnitude? Just because a building goes up does not mean that it cannot go out. The buffers are very minimal in most of the cases here in Cuphead County. Is Culpeper turning into Tyson's Corner, or even Loudoun, Loudoun County? Be very careful, because there's, there are no limits as far as the footprint of the building, its total square foot. View shed should be a factor. It should be a case-by-case basis. Last comment, why are we making a solution to a problem that we do not have? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes.
My name is Deezie Campbell, and I live in Stevensburg.
Can you, pull that mic down, so you, we want to hear what you have to say. Say your name again, for the record.
Deezie Campbell, Stevensburg. From my mom's house, and from my house, we can see the towers at Cargill. I called over there, and they're, they say they're 100 feet high. I don't know what their elevation is, if it's making them taller or not, but they do have lights, and they're quite bright all night long. So, just so you know. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'm Tim Stegmeier. I'm from Stevensburg. As Mr. Haight mentioned, it's a farming community, and we don't have a problem. Why are we addressing a problem that doesn't exist? I'm going to tell you why. Money. Those landowners want money. I, I know you all are all citizens, and you don't represent an individual district, so you also represent all the citizens. The citizens come here time, and time, and time again, and these people keep presenting a million different things for money. Now, if you pay attention to the Board of Supervisors, Brad's been on the board 29 years, and he said Culpeper has never had a significant money problem that they didn't solve easily. The citizens, I'm telling you, I meet 100 or 150 people at our business every day, and I go into conversation with them. I can't find a single person that supports any of this stuff. Everyone thinks that we should not have these data centers. Everyone thinks that we should not have solar. And you all know I've been here before. I go to the Board of Supervisor meetings. Everybody ignores the citizens. The citizens don't want it to be changed. Now, I know you all are not elected, and as you've mentioned in the past, Mr. Reeves, you're appointed by the board, so you sort of have to consider what the board is saying. But I am of the opinion, and have spoken at the board, that I believe for the board members ought to be recalled, because they don't pay attention to the comprehensive plan. And the citizens, more or less, love the comprehensive plan. And I know you've spent hours, and hours, and hours working on a new comprehensive plan, but the citizens didn't want it changed, except they don't want solar at all on anything. So, in your consideration, always keep in mind the money situation, and why you would consider changing this. This discussion of the fire truck is an excellent discussion. This discussion of the fire truck is an excellent discussion. Yes, we don't expect disasters, but they are gonna happen. And I suspect a new fire truck like that is probably a million and a half, or two and a half, or three and a half million dollars. And we've had, you all haven't, but the Board of Supervisors has had discussions on the fire trucks and new fire trucks and stuff. So, I ask you to keep in mind that you represent all the citizens and that there's only a handful of citizens in every one of these cases that we're discussing.
All right.
That they do it for money, and the citizens don't want any changes, so I recommend that you totally deny it based on the will of the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Declare the public hearing closed. Different things have been said, I, I know about money and, and, and I've heard that repeated, you know, several times and, and different situations that we've been in. And, um, you know, no one wants to say that the decisions are driven by that, but I, as I heard Mr. Stottmeyer, um, as he was explaining, um, sharing, the perfect example is, uh, we can't afford a fire truck. Okay? In the way that we are doing things, you know, at this particular point, we can't afford those things. We've heard the farming come before us, you know, plenty of times, uh, you know, when it comes to capital improvements and things like that. Knowing that there's, you know, um, funds need to be placed there, um, to do that, um, even from a standpoint of volunteers for the fire department, knowing that we're gonna be going to eventually have to go to paid firemen, um, and women. So, um, when it comes to some of these decisions we are making and we have to make, um, it's not about, um, just calling everybody from Northern Virginia and say, hey, we open for business and this what we have for, for you, just come in and tell us what you need and we're gonna make the changes. It's, it's not that when the staff comes to us and says that it's something that needs to be considered, it's a reason. And majority of the time, or every time, that I've, um, um, gone through the information that they have, they never have had on there, that this, how much money that we are gonna make for, because that's not driving the information that they send to us. The other thing that I do want to say is, uh, Mr. Stottmeyer, um, as you had come up also, we do work in a, let's say work, we are appointed by the Board of Supervisors strictly to look at the, um, policies that we, and, you know, the zoning and all that we have in place and to see if that fits whatever that, you know, we are, um, shaping. And, um, when you say, you know, it's for all of the, um, um, community, that's always taken into consideration. That's why it's not one or two of us, you know, it's more of us here so that all of us can give, you know, that input, um, there. So, um, never want any citizen to feel that, you know, decisions that we're making at board or anyone is strictly by, um, driven by money. You know, any business that comes into our community should bring some type of revenue. That's the, you know, that's just a benefit, whether it's building houses, subdivisions, or whatever it may be. So, I, I just wanted to share that and clarify that, so our commissioners, you know, um, I stress this to them all the time as, um, as it, as the chairman, that, um, in being here for twenty-eight years, almost, um, I just, um, stress to them, hey, look, the, the important part is look at the policy, see if it fits. We're looking at the future, so that's what we're planning, and we've done an excellent job with it and, um, at this particular point, and I hope a majority of the people feel that way, so. But anyway, um, we, um, declare the public hearing closed and open for any other discussion from the commission, the commissioners.
I have a question for staff.
Go right ahead, sir.
Sam, you clarified what our, our job is tonight regarding this amendment. What would be the process to o- offer an amendment with additional language that, that shapes the use of seventy-five feet? We'd have to, they'd have to come back from Rules Committee, come to you, come before us again?
Not necessarily. Um, it, it depends on how much we wanted to add to it, though. I mean, it, if we're gonna change the whole mix of what we're looking at beyond height and go into a lot of different, I would say that might be the best course of action. Um, it's just you're not recommending approval or moving forward with as written, um, and that you're recommending that it go, you know, either with no recommendation or that you not go forward with it one to seventy-five. But we could take the opportunity, it's up to the planning commission. It's not urgent, as far as I'm concerned, uh, you know, to move it, you know, tonight to the board for next month. But we, uh, we can look at other situations like Mr. Commissioner Kilby brought up about the plane, you know, looking at the view shed type, not a view shed approach, but it, it sort of is, to some degree for height consideration. That would be unique to Culpeper. We don't have that today, um, so we, staff, in other words, we need to look into something like that a little bit more. But there are localities that do it. Setback question, you know, increased setback for that is something that could come into play, too. But I would wanna have more direction from the planning commission, um, you know, than just, I, just ideas. I wanna have, I would wanna have more concrete direction from the planning commission, um, to do that. And I'm okay with that position, and I think the board would be, too, but we don't wanna spend forever on it. But at the same time, you know, we do need to get a recommendation, but there are legitimate things that you all brought up, so I understand that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Are there heavy industrial zoned properties near any residential areas?
Heavy industrial?
Roughly, I mean, is there something that we could?
Yes, uh, the Braggs Corner Road is a prime example.
Okay, and in town, we know that there are heavy industrial properties near residential?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Sam, I'm just curious, in the county, the, what's existing light industrial, heavy industrial, how much of that is open or unutilized at this point?
I, I, we could get that, I don't have that right off cuff, uh, but we could get that information.
'Cause where my mind's going is if there's enough heavy open at seventy-five feet.
There's, there's a lot more light industrial than heavy industrial, I can make that quick assessment right now, but the acreage breakdown, I don't know what that is as far as undeveloped.
Yeah, I, I guess I just like wanted to comment, and, and the last sentence here of this ordinance says, "The planning commission will determine whether the proposed ordinance amendment is necessary to further the general purpose promoting developed safety or general welfare of the public." I guess I don't think this is necessary.
And good zoning practice. And that good zoning practice could include making sure you're getting things in that zoning district that can be fully developed. I will share with you that, that, and this is just, this is an example. The data center that was approved out for Amazon, they are right up to their forty-five minute, you can build it. It's one story for them.
Okay. All right.
Sam, what's the setback for the heavy industrial versus light industrial? Is it the same currently?
The, the front setback, I believe, is at fifty feet for both, actually. I don't know, it does, it may be a difference between the side and rear setbacks.
The only reason I ask is because if, if, if you have a higher height on heavy industrial, couldn't you say that, well, if you're gonna go with the higher height on the light industrial, that you use the same setback? You know, to keep it simple, if you wanna do something like that.
So the front setback is the same. They're both the same, like today, they're both the same. The rear is a little bit different, actually, I take that back. The rear yard for the light, for heavy industrial is thirty-five feet. This is heavy industrial, not light industrial, uh, from any A zone, so agricultural or rural, rural area, and then also residential. Light industrial is a little bit different, it goes off the depth of a lot. And to get back to that section, rear yards are ten percent of the lot depth. Don't exceed twenty feet, so they're pretty.
Okay. And I think, Keith, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Chairman. Sam, so this whole question was driven by one inquiry by one?
No, sir.
Oh, you had, you had, you've had others?
We've had multiple.
All right, so, um, because the inquiry, well, the one I know about is related to the further development of the data center campus there off McDivitt, is a forty-five-foot height limit gonna constrict further developing that data center? I mean, that's an area where a seventy-five-foot tall building probably wouldn't be an issue. However, we are trying to get data centers to go into areas like that, so we're gonna shoot ourselves in the foot by keeping the limit down and keeping the industry out, I mean, based on where they are now.
Mr. Price, I couldn't answer that question and, and, you know, in full, um, you know, obviously it limits their potential. Doesn't mean, you, you, like I said, you can build up to forty-five feet, it's been done, we have TerraMark that's there, uh, Swift is there. Amazon's gonna build one to forty-five feet, um, so it can be done, it's just looking at maximizing and utilizing those areas till it's fullest.
Okay. Go ahead.
Could you comment on how this would apply to the light industrial parcels at Elkwood near the airport and how it may not apply?
Right around the airport, there is a separate overlay zone for height. I don't believe any of those existing zoning districts would actually fall in that, uh, so they would probably be okay up to seventy-five feet. Uh, when we looked at that a little bit closer, 'cause that, that circle or that football field dome-shaped overlay is just along the airstrip itself. And it does graduate up, obviously, the further you get out, it comes down, so, um, those, those zoning districts should be fine. And the reason I say that is because the heavy industrial that is, actually the primary industrial zoning that we have next to the airport is seventy-five feet today, max limit, so.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Chair, entertain motion.
I move that, um, we take the zoning ordinance ZTA dash nine dash twenty-three dash one, Appendix A, regarding the section seven point one A dash nine building height and send it to the supervisors with approval of the seventy-five-feet hi, uh, building height limit so that it is consistent with the town, the heavy industrial, uh, zones that exist already.
Okay. Motion's on the floor, do we have a second? I'll second it. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye. Or, all in favor, raise your right hand. Raise your right hand, all in favor. All opposed? Was that two hands? We can't do two hands. Morgan, what's, what's the count?
I have, um, Mr. Clancy, Mr. Burton, Mrs. Eggley, and Mrs. Ring for opposed. Oh, you're four, okay, I'm sorry.
I think it was five to three.
Five to three.
Okay. All right. We, um, send this forward to the board with recommendation of approval. Okay. Next case? Or applications? I don't know who that is.
First care of Jonathan Yates for a conditional use permit to construct and operate a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot-tall telecommunications tower in the form of a monopole with a two-foot lightning rod in accordance with Article seventeen dash six, which is standards for telecommunications towers of the zoning ordinance. The property is located off Achievement Drive on Culpeper County High School property in the Catalpa Magisterial District. It's found on Tax Map forty-one, Parcel fifty-four B. The planning commission will consider, review, and make findings whether the general location or approximate location, character, and extent of the proposed telecommunications tower is substantially in accord with the county's adopted comprehensive plan or part thereof in accordance with Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended, Section fifteen dash two, twenty-two thirty-two. The planning commission is also responsible for making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors as to approval or disapproval of the use permit.
Ms. Chairman, members of the commission, we do have an applicant, uh, for this particular use permit, um, as was forwarded in your, your package information. The property is located on the screen, should look familiar to most of you, uh, this is where Culpeper County High School is located and Culpeper County Middle School is located. They have, uh, the applicant has worked with the school board, um, to locate a potential cell tower, uh, right here. It was approximate location to the rear of both schools. They have entered into a, a potential lease agreement, uh, to accomplish this use, um, and the school board has already approved that. Um, it does require conditional use permit approval, though, ultimately from the Board of Supervisors if it were to be constructed. Normal agency reviews, uh, went out for that, as was indicated in your, in your, uh, staff report for this case. Um, we did receive some minimal comments, um, from the Sewell Water Conservation District and VDOT, who primarily will be involved at a site plan phase if the use permit were to be approved, uh, for the tower. Um, we did have our third-party consultant, as required by the code, uh, to review, uh, this report or the application as well. They did provide a report, uh, for the planning commission's consideration and for the board as well. Um, they did recommend a couple of things, um, and items that I'll go over here in just a second. Neil mentioned two different things, there's two different findings ultimately that the planning commission will need to try to find, a substantial accord finding, um, twenty-two thirty-two finding with the comprehensive plan, and then a finding, um, under Article seventeen, uh, for the use permit. Uh, just remember that, um, as we move forward tonight. As far as the comprehensive plan, we do have a new comprehensive plan, thankfully, uh, that has been adopted by the Board of Supervisors. The twenty-twenty-three comp plan does address wireless communication, um, and the desire for the county to improve service, um, which is in Chapter Seven. Um, the staff did highlight, I'm not gonna read those, uh, but there were several things that were highlighted in the staff report, um, that we felt were affirmative, uh, for this particular application as far as the comprehensive plan. Article seventeen, compliance, um, which is the meat of the use permit findings, um, specifically Article seventeen dash six, which is specifically for this industry or for the telecommunications structures. There are some changes, um, that have been made through the state code over the years. Staff did wanna point out, um, that we do need to make potential changes to our code to, to mimic that better, um, and we have not done that as of yet. Uh, but the minimum standards that are found in the state code, I believe, are adhered with this application as well as, uh, the county code. Article seventeen dash six has a, has a list of basically things that are required as far as the application itself. Um, it's very similar, uh, to other uses that we have now. Um, the applicant did, did a very thorough job, um, in their two-hundred-and-fifty-three-page application, um, that provides that information to you as far as a structural report, a view shed analysis, um, and, and, and things of that nature, um, are all in there. The third-party review, technical reviewer, CTA Lynchburg, uh, did look at it in light of our ordinance. Uh, they did pick up two, two things, or three things altogether, two things that I felt that, uh, um, were, were really important for us to focus on tonight, and the applicant has already done this. One item that the report picked up on was, uh, Article seventeen dash six, uh, dash three point three, um, a letter G specifically, talks about a view shed, or actually talks about being a one mile from a scenic byway. And Ms. Chairman, I'm gonna thumb through this real quick. We, the, the scenic byway, even on this aerial image here, is not even on the screen. Um, it's, it's down here, um, which, it's not two twenty-nine or Main Street Extended, that is not a scenic byway. Route fifteen twenty-nine Business actually is, um, that goes through the town of Culpeper, and of course it goes out into the county as well and beyond. But it is point eight, or about point eight of a mile, so it does fall under that one-mile threshold. Um, and specifically, the board ultimately would need to, to have a waiver for that section of code. The applicant did provide a letter of justification, um, that was dated March nine, uh, for, for this application, and, and that should be considered tonight. Uh, the other item, uh, that CTA pointed out, um, in their, their report that staff concurs with, is there is the dimension, and, and this may be suited for the applicant tonight, may be able to address this issue about the lease area, um, that has been agreed to with the school, and whether it includes all the landscaping, um, to the perimeter. Uh, CTA pointed out that it should, and that was their recommendation, uh, staff does concur with that. Um, regardless, uh, there are certain code requirements for the compound area itself, it will be fenced, um, and there will be some landscaping around the, the base of the, the compound. The other thing that CTA pointed out in their report, um, that the applicant has, has since provided some justification for, was they, they cited three towers within a one-mile radius, um, of this location existing, um, of being inadequate for their needs. And CTA pointed out there's a three-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot Piedmont Tower that's in the area. a three-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot Piedmont Tower that's in the area that was cited as being too close to the water tank, which is also in the, in the vicinity that AT&amp;T has already co-located on. The applicant did provide justification why those alternative site locations were not feasible as far as what they're trying to accomplish here at this particular location. Staff did concur with that analysis. Just with any cell tower, there are some, there are limited impacts. This one is proposed at a hundred-and-fifty feet tall. More recent applications have been a little bit taller, but given the area character with residential and school structures close by and real close proximity in this particular case, a hundred-and-fifty feet seems appropriate as far as, as far as size goes for this area. The applicant did provide, this is a site plan that was part of the, the package, and this would be further detailed if the use permit were to be approved with a full site plan. And I'll just pause here real quick. This is, the desired structure is a monopole. It does have the ability to co-locate, but the intended primary user is AT&amp;T. This, this kind of shows the potential lease area, or the lease area for the compound structure with the tower being located in the middle. On the outside would be the vegetation to screen the compound area. This is the map that I wouldn't point out, Ms. Chairman. This, this does show some potential visibility. The applicant did take the chance, take the opportunity to, to fly a balloon or do a balloon test, so they are, were able to get very good images of the proposed tower and how it would be impacted throughout the area. All the areas to the south, primarily, where you see the red indicators, you're not gonna see the tower from those spots, but you are and will potentially see the tower from the north, which indicates these areas right here. And there were some images taken within the North Ridge subdivision, which across north side of Ira Hoffman, and if you look back towards town, you are gonna potentially see that tower. It will not be lit, is my understanding, and does not need to be lit at this height. So the viewshed at night were relatively, remain unchanged. Just making sure I covered all the main things I wanted to cover. Chairman, I'll just wrap it up. As one more reminder, there's two findings that the Planning Commission will need to make, substantial accord finding with the comprehensive plan, and then a use permit finding for the use permit itself for the tower. We do have Mr. Yates here, representing the applicant tonight, and Ms. Chairman, he would like to make some remarks, and, and I'm sure he can answer a lot of your questions if you have some as well.
Okay. Can you get closer to that mic or?
I'm afraid I'll do something wrong.
But you won't.
I'm sorry, Ms. Chairman. How is that? Is that a little better?
That's better. Hey, before you have to bend down for some reason, and, and it's televised, so they need to hear it, you know, those who, and give your full name again, and we appreciate it.
Exactly. I think I got it right now. Jonathan Yates, for the record, here tonight, also with my colleague Andy Peterson, our radio frequency engineer, here to answer any and all questions. But before I give just a little brief, this is my first time working in the county, and I came across something incredible here, two gentlemen to my left. I think all totaled, I asked them a hundred-and-one stupid questions. They never laughed at me. They just answered them. I apologize, guys, for all the stupid questions, but we wanted to get it right. I also apologize for the number of pages in my application. Again, we wanted to get it right. This is an interesting facility. It's basically a partnership, but a lease between Milestone and the school board. Perfect location, exactly where AT&amp;T needed to be to work with the rest of their network and to bring AT&amp;T voice and broadband coverage into the area. In addition, AT&amp;T will be deploying their first responder, network authority, or first net from this facility. The Culpeper County Sheriff, the Volunteer Rescue Squad, Health and Family Protection, Town of Culpeper are all first net users. The polling question, what we try to do is, you work the context as best you can. We're a line of sight technology. Towers have to see each other. They have to talk to each other. But what we try to do here is come with the minimum to meet certain goals, what AT&amp;T needed, and also to provide space, both on the tower and the ground, for their competitors if they want to cover a deficit in that area. So we work hard on height to not go crazy with it, keeping it under that magic two-hundred feet, because it, and this is something that Sam touched on, if I get two-hundred and over, the FAA will make me put air navigation lights on it, and they tend to drive people crazy. I don't know why, but they do. So the goal here, this is where AT&amp;T needed to be, incredible piece of property. Everyone's seen the campus. You have the two schools, seventy-eight-point-six acre campus. We were able to situate behind the two schools, closer to the football field, but right in between the football and the baseball field. And in order, and what are we trying to do? We're trying to bring in infrastructure. It's wireless infrastructure. It's twenty-first century infrastructure. But what we're able to do versus power or telco or watered sewer where they have to run every linear foot to, you know, cover an area, if we can place a tower at a good vantage point, we can cover a good-sized area with it and get people's communication devices to work. So we're hoping, and you will ultimately decide, am I compliant with the twenty-three plan? Am I compliant with seventeen-six? I hope I am, because this is, I work on a lot of towers, and very rarely do I get, work on one of the property like this, where it lays out so well, works for the carrier, works for their first net deployment. We've got seventy-eight acres. We're able to pull, pull it back and achieve some incredible setbacks. As to the landscaping, we're gonna come in and put in the, about twenty-four southern magnolias. They go, go up and have a good buffer to them. Can I buffer or hide the top of a hundred-and-fifty-foot tower? No. It's visible, and it will be visible, but we do our best job, achieve good setbacks, come in with a good landscaping technique, and we do our best job to mitigate it. And that's what I hope, I hope you'll find we did here. I hope you did not read my entire application. It would have put you to sleep many times over, but if you have any questions from what staff has brought before you, or anything contained in my application, Mr. Peterson and I are here to answer any and all questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. As to commissioners, if you raise your hand, so we won't be talking over each other, and, and I recognize you, so we have some order here to, yes?
Yeah, just one question, and, and that has to do with the fall radius of the structure.
Exactly.
I thought it said that it has a seventy-five-foot fall radius. Is that correct?
Yeah. I want to bring it out.
Does it work?
Is it working now?
Andy, in addition, we have a radio engineer who's also using two poles. Andy and I will hold this together. In this particular case, the facility is being designed by Virginia P. Robert E. Beacom. He's making a couple designs here. First of all, he's designing it to the NCTIA two-twenty-two H standard, which in this case, for Culpeper County, is a hundred-and-eleven mile-per-hour wind, thirty mile-per-hour, one-inch ice. And what he's designed in here is, in case of a catastrophic five-hundred-year event, what we call a, a fall zone, where they have, catastrophic event is designed to come in within a seventy-five-foot radius or half the height of the facility.
So, so my question is, if it's, if it can fall over seventy-five-foot length, why wouldn't we want to have that, the leased area be at least seventy-five feet, so it stays inside there and is not going out onto, you know, the school grounds?
Well, first of all, we don't see that happening. This is, you know, again, the, you know, a five-hundred-year event where the winds are exceeded, and if I can, this, can I take the mic off?
Yes, go ahead.
This is what we call the monopole.
But, but you have to talk into the mic.
I can't chew gum and walk. This is what we call the monopole design. Towers come in three basic flavors. We have the guy's style, which is the old traditional ones, broadcast towers that, you know, folks my age growing up got to see with the wires coming down. We have what we call the cell supporter lattice, is the three-sided steel, and then you have the monopole. The monopole is basically just a pilot, but the steel is a heck of a lot wider, and it's, it's built out. The way, the way the monopole is designed, in a catastrophic event, what it's designed to do, think of a straw. You bend it over. It shouldn't deflect, but it'll be bent over and it has to be replaced. So with that seventy-five feet, it'll be dangling down, but we don't see any effect coming. Also, the event, the event that can take this tower down, there ain't gonna be anything around that area, because no, it's not all designed to the NCTIA standard. So keep in mind, it's one heck of an event that could take this tower down. That kind of event would take all the buildings out in that area.
But going back to the, so the monopole is designed to bend, not break? Is that what you're saying?
Really, yeah. It's built, it's built in, and again, if I break your equipment, I'll pay for it. Think of a straw. You bend it over, and it, it will dangle down, but not designed to sort of break apart.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Yes?
Just to follow up on that, just follow up on that question. Are there any buildings within the seventy-five feet that it would potentially touch?
No, sir.
Okay. And then, one of the things, obviously, that we're looking at here is the necessity for it, you know, and the need for it. So do you have the distance, I think someone may have mentioned, the closest tower or radiuses of the zones and where?
This is where we get someone who knows what they're talking about. And I'm gonna become the human easel. We have the before and after coverage plots for AT&amp;T, and he is a radio frequency engineer, and he'll walk you through it.
Okay.
The short, Andrew Peterson, radio frequency engineer here on behalf of Milestone. The short answer to the question is, there is a water tank to the southeast, about eight-tenths of a mile away. That's AT&amp;T's closest facility. The existing coverage, you know, is the, is the top exhibit here that the, the easel is displaying. You can see that there is a lack of coverage, generally, to the west of the proposed facility. The proposed facility is indicated with the black dot labeled Scanlon. Scanlon is the AT&amp;T internal name for the facility. With the, with the facility constructed and the antenna is at the one-hundred-and-forty-five-foot center line, you can see the additional coverage displayed on, on the bottom exhibit here. So beyond the coverage aspects, this is also a facility that's going to improve capacity here. School campuses, residential areas, these are areas that are notorious for using a lot of, a lot of data, a lot of bandwidth. So AT&amp;T is going to require additional resources in the area to support that demand, and this facility will go a long way in, in supporting that. So it's not only a coverage issue that, that AT&amp;T has here, also a capacity issue that will be addressed.
Okay. How about with the first net system?
So the first net system is, is a dedicated system for first responders. As was mentioned by Mr. Yates, there are a number of first net subscribers in the area that utilize that service.
If I may approach, I have a little FAQ about first net. If my application didn't put you to sleep. That's all. Speed reading.
So the summary is that first net is a dedicated resource in times of emergency for first responders. That way, when they use their devices, their devices are provisioned to have access where the typical AT&amp;T device is not.
It's like GETS.
Pardon?
It's like GETS.
I'm not familiar with, with the GETS system, but.
First access, you can't get through on a phone.
Turn your mic off.
Right. This, it uses the same, same technology as, as AT&amp;T's traditional service, its LTE and, and five-G NR service, but it, it has dedicated channels and dedicated radios for first responders that, in, in a, in a case of emergency, that they'll have access when, when everybody else is kind of getting that spinning wheel or blocked calls, that they're able to get their calls through.
Is there a distance, you know, like how far it could go?
Well, it, it, it is the most robust as far as coverage footprint, because it operates in the lower frequency band, down in the seven-hundred-megahertz spectrum, but it's still cellular technology, so there are those limitations that, that the normal cellular technology has.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yes.
I'm not a expert on any of the technical terms, but in the event of a crises at that school or in the school system, does it have the capacity to handle the extra phone calls? Not the first net, but to the public that calls in to check on their child or in and out. Does it have extra capacity as the equipment that's on there?
This will go a long way in satisfying the capacity demand in, in, you know, if there were, if there were an event like that. I can't say that, that the general public, if, if there were some type of crisis on the school campus, I can't say that the general public would have unfettered access. I mean, that, that there are, that there are a finite number of calls and data sessions that any one cell site can support, but certainly, emergency services will have access because of the first net that's being proposed.
So can you put, can you put additional equipment on there to handle the public in, at a certain period of time, under, I'm talking about duress and, and a situation that's bad, because, you know, I, I can think of the times when you can't get through on a cell to, especially to a child that you're worried about. So I wanted to know, is there enough equipment on there to handle an overload? If there's a thousand kids there, I don't know how many kids are at that high school, but, you know, if they took, a thousand parents calling in there, can that handle it? Or can, you have to put extra equipment on it?
Depends on what the activity is, if, if, if kids are, so utilizing the broadband technology, streaming video, downloading file attachments, that takes a whole lot more.
I'm talking about an active shooter situation.
Yeah, I understand the question. I'm just trying to give you a little bit of background. If there's a lot of activity going on on the devices, that, that chews up a lot of that bandwidth, so to support a thousand calls at, at a single time in, in an instance like that, where, where there's other activity on the, on the facility, I can't say.
Does equipment exist?
The, the AT&amp;T, the facility will be provisioned with all of the frequency bands that AT&amp;T is able to operate in the area. They're licensed on a county by county, or sometimes multiple counties, with the frequencies that they're allowed to deploy, and that's, that's the jurisdiction of the FCC that, that governs their frequencies that they bid on at auction, et cetera. So this facility will be provisioned with all of the frequencies and all of the capacity that AT&amp;T can deploy. But to answer the question, will it, will it accommodate all the demand at any given moment, I can't answer that question.
Well, also, just to touch on, the facility, it's designed for AT&amp;T first net, but also for four additional broadband carriers. There's space on the tower and on the ground, so if, say Verizon wanted to beef up by the school, T-Mobile, the new Dish Network, there's space for them too, because with a thousand kids, they might not be all AT&amp;T customers.
Right.
Yeah. So the capacity is built in to the tower and to the ground component, where if other broadband carriers want to utilize this also, they can also co-look, what we call co-locate on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
But one thing, which sure is gonna improve what we have now.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
That's the only thing. Yes.
So you made mention that this is gonna go a long way to meeting demand. What percentage of demand, like, will this, if this goes up, like fifty percent of that demand will be met, seventy-five?
Under normal circumstances, there, there should be no issues with meeting demand on a day-to-day basis. The, the question of, you know, if, if there was, God forbid, an active shooter situation, something like that, where everybody is, is hitting their device with all kinds of, that's a tough question to, to, to answer, and, and Mr. Yates makes a great point. The more carriers that are here, of course, the better. If Verizon wants to co-locate, if T-Mobile wants to co-locate, AT&amp;T only has twenty-five, thirty percent of the, of the, of the subscribers in a given area. I think that's a nationwide number. So there's T-Mobile, there's Verizon, there's the Dish Network that's building out now. They also have subscribers, of course, that would be students here. So the more co-location there is, of course, then, then the other subscribers would be supported. But on a day-to-day basis, this facility will, will accommodate the demand from, from a high school campus and the surrounding residential area, or both the school campuses.
A hundred percent.
Yeah, I don't anticipate any, any day-to-day chronic congestion issues with a facility like this.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Price?
So just to clarify, this isn't just cellphone access, this is broadband access.
So just to clarify, this isn't just cellphone access, this is broadband access as well, right? So bring additional broadband access to an area right now where there are issues in that regard, correct?
Yes, it'll provide for high-speed wireless access for mobile devices, data cards, laptops, tablets, any type of device that accesses the AT&amp;T network for, for data services. We'll be able to access that through this new facility.
Okay. Your proposal laid out a lot size of eighty feet by twenty-eight feet, but the county's consultant suggested a hundred feet by forty-eight feet. Are you all comfortable with the county, county consultant's recommendation? You prepared to go back to the school board, I guess, maybe, and renegotiate that?
Yeah, we, and I think they, and looking back at it, there was also, I'd think, a typo in the lease with the school board where the number was going wrong. So we will get square with the school board.
Yeah.
And we'll pay our fair share.
Okay. Well, and since you've mentioned that, so is the school system financially benefiting from this? You have a lease agreement? I mean, you will be giving, giving cash payments to the school system for this?
Yeah, there, there will be a benefit. It's, we have an actual lease with the school board, and it, it's a lease, but in a way, it's a little bit of a partnership that the benefits go up and more carriers go on there. So we're, it's a lease, but we're working closely with the school board on it.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
And I don't think I broke the mic.
No, you didn't. No, you didn't. We're gonna find out shortly. At this time, we're now in open and public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to speak on this application, please raise your hand. Be recognized by the chair. Yes. Come up and give your full name for the record, please. And speak into that lovely mic.
I just thought this was pretty interesting. I think, my name is Barbara Mosley. I'm actually in the Jefferson District. I do like the location of where this is located, but I would like for you all to think about, this is a very practice area for a lot of the kids in the school system. They use this area across country goes through, so make sure you have space in there for them to still use this area to get by. RFDs, we'll talk about later, it's definitely a health problem, too. So they gotta watch out for that. And of course, my area is horticulture, plant material, bad decision. I would like to see much better plant materials that don't go out, but grow up. So that was all I think. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission.
Yes, sir.
Don Haight-Stevensburg. Mr. Chairman said earlier today to not focus on the worst-case scenario. So why are we focusing on an active shooter situation? This is the first time, to my recollection, where an applicant actually admitted that he hoped that the planning commission did not read the entire application. This tower should also be designed like a pine tree, like I've seen those on Route Three. You can't tell if it's a pine tree or a sour, a solar tower. I would like to know exactly how much revenue we will be receiving from this application. I need to know tonight, just like Mr. Price asked, exactly how much revenue that the county will be receiving from these applications. These towers need to be in a remote area. And I took the opportunity while I was sitting there to do, to Google some hazards. Health founder, highly, higher cell towers, RFR radiation, exposed links to increased mortality on all cancers, including breast, cervix, lungs, cancer. Current studies suggest both short-term and long-term health risks within three-hundred to four-hundred meters of a cell tower. Thus, great precaution should be taken. Site cell towers away from most vulnerable segments of the population, such as children. And this cell tower is going to be a stone, stone's throw from a high school. A study from Germany found that the stress hormones, adrenaline, significantly increase over the first six months after cell tower antenna activation after eight months. Obviously, we need to do so much more research on the negative health that these cell towers will cause to our children. If a true child has cancer or a debilitating illness, they have to live with that for the rest of their life. And I want you to think about this. How many of your children or how many of your grandchildren would you want to be exposed to these hazards? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes.
Good evening. Mark Wilks from Stevensburg District.
Yes, sir.
I agree with Mr. Haight. I have done some, quite a bit of research on the negative health effects of 5G and cellular, to the point where I've gotten rid of my cellphone and no longer carry it on my body. That's how significant it was. We got rid of Wi-Fi in our house because I realized the health effects were significant and real. If the research hasn't been done, and you're not convinced in your hearts and minds of the safety of it, I'd be very hesitant, especially putting it right in the middle of a place where all our children are. I wouldn't send my children to that school, if I had children that age, because I understand the effects of that. If you don't have that awareness or that knowledge, I would find it, I wouldn't look at the industry studies. You need to look at independent third-party studies. I didn't realize this was up tonight. Otherwise, I would have brought some of those with me. I'd be happy to send them to you. There are a number of them. They are all over the place. You can find them without a lot of looking. And it's a very serious problem that I would not take lightly, especially sticking it right in the middle of a place where all the children are going to be. Would you, would they be willing to sign, or would you be willing to sign a statement, "I'll take all liability for any health hazards that would come up in the next fifty years to the children"? You know? And that kind of, that's the seriousness of it that I would, I would take. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Declarative public hearing closed. Commissioners, we have the application reformed. We've heard from the applicant, and also, we've heard from the citizens that are present. What's your pleasure at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I, if the school system, that the school board, the school administrator think that, that it's okay to have that cell tower there, I'm, I think I would defer to their judgment.
Okay. Chair, entertain a motion. Don't be afraid of it.
Mr. Price, do you want to make a motion? You want me to?
Just with those additional things on.
We get a stop.
Go ahead.
We do have to, two.
It's two, Sam? There were two parts to it, or?
Maybe you can do two, Sam, before I first.
Yeah. So the finding on Article seventeen first.
Or the comp plan first, right?
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission communicate to the Board of Supervisors a finding that the request by Milestone Towers for a conditional use permit to construct and operate a fifty-foot, a hundred-and-fifty-foot-tall telecommunications tower on the school grounds is in substantial accord with the adopted comprehensive plan or part thereof.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise? Okay. That motion is, clear. Any second motion? As in reference to the Article seventeen, right, Sam?
Ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to make a second motion, that the Planning Commission does find that the application is in compliance with Article seventeen and recommended to the Board of Supervisors as allowed by Article seventeen dash one dash two, to impose the filing as conditions of approval for this request. The telecommunications structure shall not be lighted nor surfaced with any signage or advertisements. Two, the applicant shall confirm that the proposed lease area prior to the site plan approval, so you have to confirm. The lease shall include all necessary tower infrastructure, as well as required fencing, landscaping, and access easements.
Okay. Got a question or a comment?
Let me get a second first. Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah. My only question was, do we need to say anything about the waiver?
You can make a recommendation. Ultimately, that's up to the Board of Supervisors for that waiver, but you could ask a question on that, but I don't think it's good actually.
You don't need to do that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Being that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise? We will forward that to the board with the recommendation of approval. Okay. Thank Chair, entertain a motion for five-minute recess?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Recession. Ask everybody to get settled down. We're gonna, at this time, the chair entertain a motion to come out of recess.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
We're now back in session? Okay.
Page two thirty-six dash twenty-two dash one. It's a request by Northridge Culpepper Solar LLC, care of Kenneth Neiman, for a conditionally use permit to operate a utility-scale solar facility in accordance with Article seventeen dash seven, which is standards and procedures for renewable energy generation utility-scale solar facilities. And also, in accordance with Article three dash two dash two-point-one-eight of the zoning ordinance. The property is located off Route Three, Germana Highway, in the Stevensburg Magisterial District. The applicant seeks to construct and operate a twenty-six-megawatt project on approximately three-hundred-and-fifty-five acres, of which approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-two acres will be actual panel and equipment area. It's found on tax map fifty-four, parcels twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, and twenty-five C. The Planning Commission will consider, review, and make findings whether the general location or subsequent location character and extent of the proposed utility-scale solar facility are substantially in accord with the county's adopted comprehensive plan or part thereof in accordance with Code of Virginia nineteen-fifty as amended, section fifteen point two, twenty-two, thirty-two. The Planning Commission will also, is also responsible for making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors as to the approval or disapproval of the use permit.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, on the screen highlights the parcel in red that would be considered, it's not one tract of land, as Neil mentioned, it does make up a couple of different parcels or pieces thereof. But the area in red shows the project area that is proposed by the applicant, Northridge Culpepper Solar LLC, for a twenty-six-megawatt facility. This is our first, will be our first conditional use permit for this particular use under the new ordinance that the board adopted in February of this year, as well as under the new comprehensive plan, which was also adopted earlier this year. The staff report points out all the normal things that you expect to see for this use. The Planning Commission, you all have reviewed several in the past several years now, as far as utility-scale solar facilities. But each one is unique. Each site is unique. Each project is unique and has unique circumstances. This particular project, as Neil mentioned, is the project area is about two-hundred-and-fifty-two acres, so it does fall within the new guidance, or not guidance at this point, the new ordinance, for three-hundred acres, so it does fall within that, which is one of the big parameters that was discussed as far as size goes. The commission, when you're looking, looking at these, not only do you have the use permit, section seventeen-seven, it's made up of two sections, primarily the application documents. The applicant submitted this, just as a little bit of background, submitted this application fall of twenty-twenty-two. The applicant did pay attention to the discussion with the Planning Commission and the board, eventually with the ordinance that is now in play, and did choose to move forward after the ordinance was adopted. The applicant, since February, when the ordinance was adopted, has been working hard to adjust their application and to amend their application to meet the new ordinance criteria. The applicant submitted further information in March of this year, which is made part of the board docs package, and that was reviewed by staff. That will be reviewed by the Planning Commission tonight. On the screen is an aerial shot prior to timbering of this area. As you can see, historically and in recent years, has been used for evergreen plantings. The applicant has a better shot in their presentation that shows what it looks like today, from the air at least. But those trees are no longer there. The buffers that they are proposing do remain in place along the streams that are through the property or the project area, as well as the boundary Little more background, widened out to show the area as a whole. This is a map that staff has produced that shows the project area, again, in red for Northridge Solar. It also shows the light industrial property that the board rezoned, those proposed data center use here on Route Three. The area in blue does show the prior approved but not built Greenwood Solar Facility there along Batina Road, and then again along Blackjack Road further to the west. I just wanted to show this, just to kind of show how things are interplayed out there today. Just keep in mind, this was approved a few years ago now. It's still considered valid. The site plan was approved. The site plan is still considered valid. It's just is not built. There are no land disturbance permits. There are no construction permits. We have not heard from this applicant in some time. Just wanted to put that out there. We are reviewing site plans currently for the data center. Just some area, other considerations that the ordinance points out, our policy points out, the comprehensive plan points out. The areas that are highlighted in the dark green are your prime, what are designated anyway as your prime farmland soils. Doesn't mean that the property couldn't produce agriculture. It certainly could. But those areas in dark green are your designated as prime soils. The blue hatched area is designated as FEMA floodplain, one percent annual chance floodplain, or one-hundred-year floodplain. Just some other considerations, widened out again, this time the parcel or the project area is highlighted in yellow. This map does add in, it keeps the prime soils in brown. It shows the floodplain in blue. This time, you have some of the area historic resources. You have the Civil War Battlefield Study Area here in this greenish-brownish color here, area of historic interest when you get closer to the heart of Stevensburg, just to the northwest of the project area. But as you can see, and the reason why this is, I think, significant as far as historic resources go, is it, this compared to some facilities, is fairly isolated from. We do have some in close proximity, just not directly The applicant did produce a preliminary site plan. That's what's shown on the screen tonight, and the applicant, Mr. Neiman, could probably go into more detail if the Planning Commission desires him to, in his presentation, to show the site layout and what they're proposing. But it just shows the project area itself, two-hundred-and-fifty-two acres, panels, inverters, access roads. Point of interconnection would come, is proposed to come along this property line here to infrastructure that's currently in place on Route Three. Access would be for construction purposes, and then access to maintain the site if it were to be built would be off of Route Three and through what is known as Sherwood Farm Property there to the east. And that's where the property or the project is proposed on a portion of that farm today. Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to go through details, but I just wanted to point out a couple of things. We do have the new standards. We highlighted those the best we could. I will share that as we work through, you're gonna hear the word "new." They are new. The board worked on it. You all worked on it. The final version was adopted February seventh. It wasn't exactly how the Planning Commission sent it forward, so hopefully you've had a chance to look at what was submitted and what was adopted by the board. But staff did try to analyze this application and provide direction for the Planning Commission as far as what may be missing, or we may need a little more information, too. So I'm going to go directly to that part of the staff report, where we feel like the applicant is still missing, missing the mark just a little bit, and they already are working towards providing better answers or better, more complete information to satisfy those code parameters. One thing that, that is, you notice right up front, the ordinance height limit for solar panels is fourteen feet. The applicant in their initial application did say that they would want to go to eighteen feet. Staff does not see a way around the fourteen feet, it's hard fast code, and that needs to be met, and I don't believe a variance would be approved, or should be approved in this case. The applicant has sent correspondence to each of these remarks that staff has made and is willing to make those changes. Staff does believe that more detail is encouraged on a new requirement, which is a vegetation management plan in the ordinance. Preliminary soil testing could be done to determine what types of ground cover that may generally work for the site, once it's prepared, to maintain basically the soil on the property, so there's no soil loss, and no future erosion issues, which has been a big issue for consistently with any of these sites. Transportation mitigation plan, staff did, did raise a little bit of objection to the two roads that were mentioned in that report that could be used, two secondary roads specifically, Carrico Mills and Stevensburg Road. Both of those roads are used as cut-through traffic between twenty-nine and Route Three, but they're, in staff's opinion, not adequate for large-volume construction vehicles, neither road. Neither road has adequate shoulders, there's a lot of local traffic that does use those roads, including school buses in nature, and there's no reason, in staff's opinion, why twenty-nine and Route Three couldn't be used exclusively to provide any material for construction or construction access. It may add a couple more miles to the construction route, and I understand time is money and gas is money, but to use major corridors for a large construction site like this is ideal, because there's capacity on those roads. So, and then, and the applicant is willing to make those changes, from what I understand. Staff does believe that more information should be supplied as far as the, another new requirement in the ordinance, which is the requirement for the natural resource inventory. The inventory, according to the ordinance, shall contain a plan sheet that clearly depicts the extended location of any sensitive or environmentally significant feature on the property. In staff's opinion, the applicant's documentation, as submitted prior, just lacks the detail that is needed to comply with that section. Stormwater management analysis, we believe does need some work as well, and the applicant may want to discuss that in more detail tonight as well, but there needs to be further clarification and review to determine what statutory we have. Staff is of the opinion, is, is currently, that the way the ordinance is drafted and the way the ordinance was written, and the way the ordinance was ultimately adopted, was that panel areas are included for stormwater calculations, as impervious, and the applicant will most likely need to make those adjustments. Geotechnical analysis is also code requirement now, we've gotten that in pass with previous applications, but now it actually is a requirement. The applicant did do some investigative work on eleven different spots throughout the site, they provided that information of where those locations were in their application. Those preliminary results didn't yield any subsurface rock at those locations, at least to a depth of three feet. This is something that staff believes that further, further detail, even at the use permit phase, and most certainly at the site plan phase, should be provided by the applicant, especially where any stormwater facilities may, may be planned to accommodate stormwater on the site. Last thing that staff pointed out, and then I'll close with this, Mr. Chairman, is that the applicant should provide evidence of coordinating with Williams Pipeline, which runs through the property. You can see, you can see that on the screen pretty clearly with the aerial shot, it does run, and they're right adjacent to where the project area would be. This is a major gas transmission line, goes bisects right through the county, and my understanding is the applicant will coordinate with the gas company and the pipeline, and that would most certainly be required, and I think we should ensure that with any condition of approval. I just want to make sure, when you're talking about potential pile driving for racking systems, you know, if there's any blasting to be employed for stormwater facilities, and any other major construction traffic, that it wouldn't interfere with any of the gas pipeline transmission there, that's there currently. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer your questions, I'm sure there will be some along the way tonight, but the applicant does have a presentation as well, and I would like to go over their project in detail.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Staff questions?
Oh, want to go ahead and have the applicant?
No, we'll ask Ken.
Okay. All right. We have any questions for staff, we'll do that now, just briefly, and then we'll move to the applicant, then. Okay? Yes?
Sam, I'd like to ask you a question. I have read through the documents here, and I looked at an independent study by an engineer, and I looked at fifteen pages of comments. And when you wrote your report, did you already have that?
I did, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, and I heard in your presentation, there was a lot of deficiencies or things that aren't exactly clear, aren't exactly detailed enough, et cetera, and I feel as though we're looking at incomplete and being incomplete documents, and being asked to go through an exercise that I kind of find it to be a futile exercise, if he's not complete, he's not ready. We're going to now listen to the presentation part of it, which is fine, and I'm happy to do that, but when I look at our standards and procedures that we just did for Article seventeen dash seven, there's not a checklist where I can match back every one of those to what he's presented to us, and to you. All right, and then I look at the independent engineer's report of fifteen pages, and there's lots of questions in there. So, I just feel like it needs to be cleaned up before it's, before us, are we on a timeline or something?
No, and so the, the planning commission certainly can defer, and that is staff's recommendation, must defer action on this. So when the applicant submitted their revised application in March, in their mind, they checked all the boxes of the ordinance at the time. One could argue that that was done. There's also room for interpretation in the new code for what level of detail needs to be met to really fully check that box. So I would argue that there's a little bit of disagreement, but the applicant has been willing to work through those disagreements that staff has with their application to deem it complete. This is new territory, we have not used this ordinance today. Mr. Neiman, lucky or not, is the first one to try to use it. And I, I think that, and I'll use the term grace, you can do it whether you want to or not, but in all fairness to this particular applicant, I think that a deferral would be the best action ultimately, because I do feel like they can at least put their best foot forward with how we're interpreting the ordinance, and to date, that's never been done yet.
Yeah, and his response to your staff comments was April sixth, which was recent. So we're cramming everything up now, trying to be gracious and accommodating, which I, I think, I, okay, fine.
And the applicant thought they would be ready, I didn't mean to cut you off, Commissioner President, but the applicant did think they were going to be ready, and there are advertising requirements, so we do have to meet those well ahead of tonight, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Katie?
Sam. Acreage wise, how much other existing zoned parcels are out there for something like this?
For, for solar specifically? Greenwood's the only one that we've approved to date.
But I'm saying, other industrial land, I can't remember, utility energy is heavy industrial, right?
It, it could be, it could be deployed in the heavy or light industrials and districts as well, yeah.
So how much heavy and light industrial land is out there that's open, that it, potentially this could go on instead of doing a rezoning?
Mr. Reams, you asked that question earlier with a, with another discussion, and I can't give you that on the fly, I could certainly produce that information to you, but I don't know how much undeveloped industrial land we have in the county right off the cuff.
But, without an exact number, there is plenty open.
There, there are, there is some availability, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question, since Katie brought the issue up, and I was going to ask this later on? Our new comp plan encourages utility scale solar developers to go to land that's already zoned industrial, but to my knowledge, all of the solar applications that have come in have been conditional use permits for agricultural land, is that correct? So why do you think they haven't gone to the industrial end? I mean, is there something about what, where we have our industrial zoning that makes it inappropriate or inconvenient or too expensive for solar scale development?
Commissioner Price, you know, it, I'm sure it varies for each applicant, where they choose why they want to go there, you have to, one is infrastructure, obviously a lot of thought goes behind where the existing power lines are, in other words, the transmission line, or other suitable distribution lines that they can use. Obviously, the terrain itself, you know, the access to the property, willing landowners to entertain the land use, and then whether what, what is considered the highest and best use, and each landowner has to make that decision for their property. And I think economically, that's probably where and why we're seeing it, mostly in agricultural zones.
All right. No one else? Is the applicant or representative for the applicant, if he coming at this time? Give you a full name for the record. Go right ahead. We do need to hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the planning commission. Good evening, my name is Ken Neiman, I'm the founder and president of Northridge Resources. We are a solar project developer located in Alexandria, Virginia. We are also the applicant for this conditional use permit. I'm going to cover a lot of ground tonight, some of it may be premature, I understand that, I understand what the issues are, I trust you'll bear with me, Sam did a good job of going over some of the major attributes of the project, but we do have a lot of ground to cover, I'll try to be as brief as I can and try not to repeat myself. Before I forget, there are three people here that are with me, I should introduce them. One is Ron Fig, Ron is our senior electrical engineer, including thirty-four years with Virginia Power. Ricky Hewitt is here, he's the president of Hewitt Solutions out of Richmond, they are our civil engineering consultant. And last but not least, is Dave Kelsey, Dave is the representative for the owners of the property, Sherwood Farms. So as Sam has covered, we are proposing a twenty-six megawatt solar project. A project of that size will power about forty-five hundred typical homes, Culpeper homes for a year. We anticipate maybe on the order of sixty-five thousand solar panels, that'll be mounted on a single-axis tracking system that will follow the sun in the morning, coming up in the east, and setting in the west in the afternoon. We will connect, unlike some of the projects you've seen, we will connect into the existing Dominion medium voltage distribution system, the power will go back to the Culpeper substation in the town of Culpeper, and as a result, the power that we generate will be distributed and used in local county homes and businesses. There are no new high voltage transmission lines required, there's no substation per se required. We do have to upgrade, or Dominion will upgrade some of the existing thirteen point two KV line on Route Three with wood poles, and I have a picture of those further in the presentation. But it's also important to note that all the costs for these upgrades and interconnection will be borne by, excuse me, borne by the project itself. The project's located on four adjoining parcels owned by Sherwood Limited Partnership, located in the Stevensburg District. The solar, solar project area is two hundred and fifty-two acres, as Sam has mentioned, but the total project boundary is three hundred and fifty-five, there's about a hundred and three acres of environmental areas and the associated buffers, property line setbacks, there's a natural gas pipeline that was discussed, and there's also a private road, and the site was recently timbered, and I have some photographs of that. Also important to note, the only access to the site will be off Route Three East, and that'll be both for construction traffic as well as operational traffic. And we believe, as was mentioned, that the project does generally conform with all, with the new updated comprehensive plan, the solar ordinance, as well as the updated solar policy. So here's the site where it's located. The red circle is a five-mile radius from the center of the site, you can see the town of Culpeper to the northwest, the Culpeper Regional Airport is about six and a half miles north, there's the town of Stevensburg and Lignam, so it kind of gives you a sense of where we are. This is a closer view, the red circle is a one-mile radius from the center of the site. You can see that there are a handful of residences within that one-mile radius, the closest being, let's see if our pointer works, there we go, okay. That's the closest residence to the site, that's about eight hundred feet. I should note, though, that all three of the residents down here are participating in, to one degree or another, with the Greenwood solar project. Route Three is over here, of course, the site entrance will be over here, the Salubria Mansion to the northwest of the site, and of course, there is the Greenwood solar project that abuts a portion of our site to the west. Here's an aerial photograph that was taken in December, this shows the current condition of the site. As you can see, it's been timbered out, this area, I would, whoops, sorry, wrong button, this area here has been timbered as well, so these trees are gone. What I want to point out also is that you can see along the north boundary, along here, along the southern boundary, there's a good buffer of existing timber that will remain, there's at least a hundred feet of timber that will act as our, part of our buffer system. And the Greenwood solar project, of course, is here to the west. So why did we pick this particular site? This project, or this, this land is zoned A-one agricultural energy farms, solar energy farms aren't allowed use, subject to a CUP, as you all know, does not contain any prime farmland, it's not within the Stevensburg Agricultural District. This project, along with Greenwood, will stay below the county's imposed limits of twenty-four hundred acres and two hundred and forty total megawatts. The solar panel areas at two hundred and fifty-two acres is below the three hundred acre threshold. We had some fairly extensive discussions with Dominion, and they informed us that the system, their system, including the Culpeper substation, could accept power from a twenty-six megawatt solar farm, and Dominion is in the process of studying our interconnection as we speak. The site is well screened by topography and existing timber with limited or no visibility from nearby residences, Batna Road, Route Three, the Salubria Mansion, and Hansborough's Ridge. It is not within any Civil War Battlefield boundary areas or core Battlefield Study areas, and based on our desktop analysis, the site contains no historic, cultural, or architectural resources. And lastly, the property owners consider a project like this a good use of their land, especially when you consider it's a thirty-five-year lease with a decommissioning bond required to ensure that the site is restored for further, for future use. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, Sam did an excellent job of explaining the area to you. Again, the area in yellow is the total project area, you can see where the hundred-year floodplains are to the east and west, those sort of green areas are the preliminary wetlands areas that we have determined are on site, there's a couple of perennial streams that run through the property here and up here, the point of interconnection should be up here, that'll tie into the Dominion system up on Route Three. And the area in magenta, sort of pink magenta, is the two hundred-foot property line setback. So let me take a minute and show you some viewshed photos, if you will, this is a picture that was taken at the intersection of Carrico Mills Road and Route Three. The solar site is in the distance where those arrows are, it's anywhere from four tenths of a mile to eight tenths of a mile in, in the distance, you will not be able to see it from Route Three. You will not be able to see it from Route 3. This is a picture taken from the base of Hansbrough's Ridge, looking sort of southeast. Again, the solar site is a mile and a quarter away, beyond that tree line. You won't see it. This was taken from the rear yard of Salubria. Again, the project's about eight tenths of a mile to the southeast, beyond that tree line, and you won't be able to see the project from Salubria. Lastly, this is a picture taken from Batna Road, looking east. You don't see much, and that's for a reason, because the solar project will actually be beyond this tree line in the distance, so you will not see the site from Batna Road. Very quickly, sorry, a quick overview of the interconnection. Again, the power from the site will feed into existing distribution system on Route 3 and feed back to the Dominion Culpeper Substation. This is a picture of a typical 34.5 kV line that'll be upgraded on Route 3. It's, you know, wooden pole. You see them everywhere, so there's no steel transmission towers, unlike some of the other projects you might have seen. This is the existing entrance at Sherwood Farm Road. This is our proposed site entrance. You can see it's improved. We'll have to do some additional improvements to it, probably widen it, increase the size of the apron. Carrico Mills Road is right across Route 3, right there. This is a view looking west from the entrance. I show this because we've got tremendous sightline distances here, so there's no issues about traffic when trucks or cars are entering or exiting the site. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on the comp plan because I think Sam, I think Sam has done a good job with that. Let me just, so in fact, I'm going to skip over. I'm going to, well, I will, I will highlight one thing. It's our intention to incorporate native grasses, pollinator to the extent we can. There's something called the Virginia Pollinator Smart Program that we will attempt to follow to the extent that we count or a similar program, because we understand the importance of proper ground cover for projects like this. Quickly on the solar policy, one thing I want to point out here is the second item. And there is a slide that talks about the economics of a project like this. In addition to real estate taxes, we are willing to talk with the county and enter into a siting agreement if the county chooses. Siting agreement allows for a revenue share payment to the county in lieu of machinery and tools taxes. I believe the Maroon Solar Project offered, or may have actually negotiated, a siting agreement with you all. We don't have one in place. In order for the revenue share option to work, we do have to have a siting agreement. We do not have a purchaser for the project, but it is important to understand, I think everybody understands, that any project like this, all the permits, all the approvals, the assets, the obligations run with the land, so anybody who subsequently purchases project is obligated to meet all of the conditions in the conditional use permit, all the environmental permits and approvals. I think that's an important point. Sam covered, or I'm sorry, as it relates to the solar ordinance, a couple things. We did provide an updated decommissioning cost estimate of about $1,200,000, generally consistent with the numbers you've seen on the other projects, in particular, Maroon. That cost will be updated every three years, so the question has come up about, well, how do we know that that number is right? The fact of the matter is, I'm not aware of a single solar project that's been decommissioned yet. So getting accurate data on decommissioning costs is somewhat of a, somewhat of an art and not a science. But the surety, the surety will be posted prior to, prior to commissioning, and it will be updated every three years by an independent engineer, so you're assured that the cost will be current. Limiting construction times, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM or sunset. We will have a security fence around the site, but the site plan does allow for wildlife corridors, and those will be spelled out in the final site plan. We are committed to utilizing best practices for erosion and sediment control and stormwater management. We understand this is a huge issue with the county. We will follow the 100-acre phasing limit that's in the ordinance, which requires stabilization within 14 days, and there'll be 100-foot riparian buffer from perennial streams. We don't anticipate any blasting being required for this project based on our preliminary geotech. As Sam mentioned, we did soil boreings down to three feet, primarily in the areas where we think the stormwater basins will be located. We hit no rock to a depth of three feet. So we're guardedly optimistic we won't need to do any blasting, but to the extent we do, any damages that are confirmed to be caused by the project will be covered by the We'll perform groundwater testing both prior to construction and on an annual basis. We will perform a flood, a floodplain study. We are committed, and our preliminary assessments suggest that we can meet this issue of a no-rise finding, which means our project will not cause a rise in flood levels downstream of the site. I think I should also point out that the maps from the USDA show that only about 4% of our site is prone to occasional or frequent flooding. The only improvement that we anticipate in the floodplain is the site access road. We have to cross the floodplain at some point. We don't, but that's a fairly straightforward process in terms of sizing and designing. We did provide comments on the staff analysis from March 27th. I think Sam covered those quite well. I won't go through those, other than a couple of things. We have committed to work with staff on this issue of treating the solar panels as impervious surface. This is a bit of a controversial issue within the state, certainly for solar developers. It's not as black and white as it might seem to be. The bottom line for us is, we are committed to working with staff, we're committed to working with the county, we're committed to working with the DEQ, and in the end, we will come up with a plan that conforms with the county's needs as well as the DEQ's requirements. We have been in contact with Transco about the pipeline. We are committed to coordinate with them. We don't anticipate any problems, but we will, we do have a dialogue started with them. And then lastly, and this may be the elephant in the room, I acknowledge that. This project is separate and distinct from Greenwood. Separate project ownership. The two projects are not visible from one another, at least from main roads, houses, things of that sort. There's vegetation that will separate the two projects, and our project connects into the Dominion distribution system. The Greenwood project connects into the larger PJM regional transmission system. But I understand the optics. We're not insensitive to that, but I do want to make the point that these are two separate and distinct projects. Very quickly, just to point out the preliminary location of the stormwater ponds, I meant to count them, but there's roughly 20 preliminary locations for the stormwater, and those will have to be obviously sized and located once we do final detailed design and engineering. Let's talk about revenues, revenue impacts to the county very quickly. Obviously, a project like this will cost roughly $50 million to build, all in. There's construction labor during the period of construction. There's economic output from services and goods that are provided. Obviously, the property owners get lease revenues, and there's a relatively fairly substantial amount of additional revenue that comes to the county with very few additional services required. Bottom line is, we anticipate in the first year, additional, now, these are net increases, not gross, these are net increases, net increase of about $76 million to the county, and over the 35-year life of the project, about 2.5 million. I'm getting to the end, I promise. We did, we have had a community outreach. I want to go through that very quickly. We did have a community information meeting on January 4th at Lynn Park. We had seven people attend. We went through the project in detail, answered questions, talked about why we chose this potential site, potential impacts. We did meet with most, if not all, of the nearby neighbors to review the project with them, and I did reach out and in some cases actually spoke to, or at least communicated with Citizens for Responsible Solar, the Piedmont Environmental Council, Friends of Culpeper Battlefields, and the Culpeper Alliance for Balanced Growth. And we did meet with Supervisor Gugino. So where are we now? I won't go through all these. Obviously, we're here tonight at the Planning Commission. I understand there's been a request for a deferral in the future. Obviously, we hope to be in front of the Board of Supervisors at some point. If the CUP is approved, there's a bunch of additional environmental site studies that need to be done prior to final site plan, wetlands delineations, threatened endangered species, architectural, cultural resources, there's a whole litany of studies that would be necessary before we submit the final site plan. If, if everything goes according to plan, and occasionally it does, we would expect to start construction sometime in late 2025 with an estimated in-service date of mid-2026. And with that, I will end my presentation. Obviously, myself and my group are available to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. We, we'll take a few questions now, and if we, we have some, and then we'll give the public here and give the, you know, those who are here a chance, and then we can ask other questions at the end. So if you raise your hand, if you've got some questions that you want to ask right now to the applicant.
Yes, sir. I know you made the comment, you know, you are not Greenwood, but there's the potential now for Greenwood to be building their facility at the same time you're building your facility. So have you looked at, you know, what that might do to your traffic management plan and how might, how that might complicate things, or how might you react to that?
Well, at least as it relates to traffic, I don't see any impact or connection between the two projects. We come off exclusively off Route 3 East. I don't, I don't recall Greenwood's specific construction traffic management, but I think most of theirs is coming off Batna and Blackjack Road. So at least in terms of construction traffic, I don't see any overlap between the two projects.
I lost it. Sorry. The dates of the construction, you said it was 20, late 2025 through mid-2027?
Six.
26. Okay.
Six.
26. Roughly six to 10 months construction, commissioning is typical for projects of this size. Okay.
I'm just going to check. That might be where that noise is going to come from.
Okay, I think that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Okay. I'm ready.
Yes, go ahead.
I'll, I'll just ask another question regarding to traffic. I was at Sherwood Farm Road today about 3:30, and there's some stacking on Carrico Mills Road, and you have to wait a little bit to cross. And I was wondering, at what point would you pick entrance option one, which is at the farm road, or would you go down and do option two? Or is that not on the table anymore?
Well, it is, or we would like it to be. The benefit of option two, frankly, is it eliminates the floodplain crossing. But we need, we need to do more work. We need to do a delineation, wetlands delineation. We need to meet with the VDOT. We need to meet with the county. As I understand it, there's some pending improvements at that intersection. I'm not exactly sure what they are or what they would mean, but I would like to keep the option for the second, option two, open as a condition to the use permit.
So VDOT mentioned some recommendations. Do you, are you willing to go along with any more traffic calming type items there on Route 3, or, you know, whether, I'm curious whether they'll have to put up lights or signs or slow the traffic a little, or if at all?
Well, certainly not during the operational phase. Once the project's built, I mean, you will, you'll see more traffic.
I'm talking about construction phase, I guess.
Yeah. There's going to have to be a detailed construction management plan with VDOT. There may be people, you know, with flags when we are getting a lot of truck traffic in for deliveries. Whatever VDOT requires, we're prepared to meet, whether that's temporary lights, I'm not sure, frankly. But if that's deemed to be necessary, then we will do it.
Okay. And so those details will be mapped out in that plan by final site plan review?
Yes.
Not necessarily any more detail by the time we perhaps defer?
Yes, the, at site plan approval, those details will be fleshed out.
Okay. All right. That's it for now. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? We'll go ahead.
I just had a couple of questions. One was the, from a stormwater standpoint, you mentioned that the solar panels, you know, our ordinance basically says must be considered regardless of whether the interconnects and things like that in regards to the EQ. So are you saying earlier that you will definitely comply with treating it as an impervious area?
Yes and no. I don't mean to dodge your question. And I'm, in a second, I'm going to call up my civil engineer and ask him to, to answer your question.
Sure.
Again, it's, it's a nuanced issue. There's some information that suggests that DEQ is, may in fact modify their suggestions, their recommendations on this whole impervious panel issue. That's not to say that Culpeper County might not impose it regardless.
Right.
But as I'm sure you know, DEQ administers your stormwater plan for you. So on the one hand, we need to follow the DEQ guidelines. On the other hand, we need to follow the conditions that are imposed on the project by the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. Does that answer your question? If it doesn't, I'm happy to have Ricky Hewitt.
I mean, I guess, sort of. I mean, I think we would be looking for that, you know, to make sure that that's complied, because if you're looking at like the stormwater management facilities and you start talking about like energy balance and things like that, the site was also timbered, so you're going to have to take it back to forested condition based on the hydrology and hydraulics associated with the project. And as you go forward with the higher your storms, what we had envisioned, at least as part of the ordinance, and it basically says that you need to provide the size and the approximate volume of the facilities along with drainage devices as part of your preliminary report, that's part of their CUP. So that application that we have here doesn't necessarily go to that level of detail that we have. In addition, it also says you must evaluate existing culverts and culverts and things of that nature, which it hasn't addressed, and then also adequate outfall for the streams and things of that nature. So I think when we look at the, the whole package, we're looking for that to be looked at, at this time, so that we can adequately say that, yeah, this is, what you're proposing is going to work in that regard. And then as far as the floodplain goes, I think the intent there is to look at the ultimate hydrology into the floodplain. I did see in your, your text that you did say that you would provide 100-year detention for your stormwater management facilities, which, which is good. The only question would be is how does that impact the floodplains and things like that, because essentially you would be raising the hydrology level in your CN values to the ultimate floodplain, which could potentially raise the water surface elevation. So that's why you'd provide the 100-year detention. I assume that's the intent there.
I'm going to have to defer to my civil engineer.
I think that's a good idea. You can.
So anyway, those, I mean, the stormwater hydrology is always, always a concern there, but I just didn't see enough information in the CUP to actually review that information.
Well, and as, as Sam alluded to, this is a bit of an iterative process here. We're sort of plowing new ground. We are, you are, I understand that. Obviously, we want, we want to be responsive to the ordinance, what it calls. Obviously, we want, we want to be responsive to the ordinance, what it calls for. We're going to commit to doing that. We clearly have not done it to the full extent yet, but we're working on it.
Let me have, had a couple of other questions and then leave.
Well, let him come on up and introduce himself so he can be prepared to assist in any way.
Hi, my name is Ricky Hewitt. I'm a licensed engineer, owner of Hewitt Solutions. We're a small group of three professional civil engineers. We've been working, two of us have been working in the utility scale solar space in North Carolina, Virginia, Mid-Atlantic since 2017 out of Richmond. And so we've worked on, either touched some, some form or fashion over four gigawatts of solar and have watched it evolve quite a bit since 2016, 2017. And we've staked our careers on trying to help partner with localities and utilities to make solar better than what it has been. And wanted to also mention, I guess, answer a few of your questions there, Commissioner. The first one being your, your question about the ordinance and, well, let me take a step back. I'm a third-party engineer, not a part of this project outside of just representing, providing some consulting and design associated with it. So any, any energy you feel from me is just a conviction that there's a right way to do this, and we should be looking to do it and not necessarily specific to this project. But the, the county's ordinance in stating that the panels need to be considered impervious, I have some concerns about that for a couple of reasons. One would be that the reason that that was taken was based off of DEQ's guidance that was once put out and then retracted or put an exclusion on. And, and by putting something like that in the ordinance is okay, but to make it a condition of a, of a condition, a use permit would be to take a current approach or understanding by DEQ, given all the projects that they have currently in design and construction. We take a snapshot of that and say that that's the best way to model the hydrology or to make sure these projects work. And we've seen an evolution there by taking, you know, new information in, absorbing it, and then reapplying it in a best, in a best way. And so at a conditional use permit level, I caution against it for the simple state that like DEQ or anybody else, there's projects that are currently being designed and built and reviewed, and a lot of that information will be, you'll want to take that in and apply it during the final site plan. And so the ordinance would apply during, you know, a site plan review and when all that design's taken place. And that's where I would really push for that type of commitment to a certain design parameter to take place. There's ways around that to make sure that the county, the project is conservative as it needs to be. For instance, I've heard you speak, you've obviously got an engineering background, and curve number is the, is the factor that goes into modeling the, the stormwater runoff. And the way you get to a curve number is looking at land cover, impervious, grass, woods, different types of soils. And so I'm a big advocate for approaching and looking at the curve number specifically and making sure that that number is, is well thought out to make sure that we're modeling things correctly and not necessarily honing in on any type of land cover. As an, as an additional example, and I'll end with this, but there's an ASE study that was put out that looked at the effects of solar panels on a grass field, for instance. And what it found was that there was negligible effects to the, the volume and the rate of runoff. So the volume and the amount, the rate, how fast it's leaving. Everything really revolved around two things, compaction or the, the hydraulic soil group. B is a, is a much more infiltrating soil than a C. And so they saw when they made adjustments to the hydraulic soil group, which is pretty similar to what happens during compaction, that that had an effect on the, the rate and volume of runoff. They also saw that the, the amount of vegetation really had a significant effect, but the, the panels themselves considering them impervious or not, it was negligible. And I'll say, since many of the projects that we've seen in the news and that have not gone super well, let's say a project in the last 12 months, if there were any issues on that project that was designed, you know, multiple years ago. And since then, DEQ has done multiple things to make sure that the design has been more robust. They've required adjustment of the hydraulic soil group or some way of understanding the level of compaction that happens on these sites that used to not happen. They've, they've switched the land cover type from, from an open space, which is a shorter grass, or sorry, from a meadow, which is a taller, thicker grass, to a, to an open space. And now they're going to be incorporating the panels as impervious. So my point is, there's going to be a lot more information coming in on these sites and to allow the, the site plan process to address the curve number and the runoff, the design parameters, I think, is best suited. Because if it were to be committed now and additional information comes out, it may not be as advantageous to the project because every design is iterative, there's a lot of parameters and you want to really mesh them well. And as an engineer, and a licensed engineer, I want as much freedom to pull from all the tools that we need to make a project effective. And if we put a timestamp on some design parameter now, that might change in the future. I don't, I don't recommend it.
Yeah, I guess the thing for us is that it is in our ordinance, you know, so we're here to enforce that ordinance, you know? So it currently, it states that that would be required. And so the other thing is that also says the plan shall also analyze all necessary hydrology. Has that been completed?
That's, well, I don't know that there's a, there's a way to actually, kind of like Sam's point earlier, that is a very, very open-ended, vague-type statement.
For the culverts?
I'm sorry.
Or any existing culverts. It says the preliminary plan shall provide adequate outfall analysis for all existing structures and culverts.
Yeah, so the, the requirement for the floodplain analysis, and one correction to what was stated earlier, there wasn't a commitment necessarily to detaining the 100-year storm, but there was a commitment to...
It's actually in the, written in the, in your section here.
It, it was a commitment to making sure there was no rise to...
I'm talking about stormwater management for the 100-year storm. There's actually a section in there that specifically states that you will provide storm, 100-year stormwater detention in your ponds.
In the, in the ordinance?
In, no, in your application.
There was a, the, the intent was to make, to prove that there would be a floodplain study as required to, to analyze the floodplain. And there was a proposal by Mr. Niemann to do that floodplain study and make sure that there is a finding of no rise to the floodplain on any of the adjacent properties, which is, and in order to achieve that, there needs to be some level of detention on the 100-year storm. But that's not a commitment necessarily directly to have every single one basin detain a 100-year storm. Because as you know, you know, different peaks, and it's not actually advantageous to the project to by default assume that you want to detain a 100-year storm, depending on where you're at, and that's the importance of a floodplain study. You might actually want to kick that water out sooner as opposed to holding it up because it might be better for the overall floodplain.
You may, but as part of the application, there was no analysis done as part of it. You just put notes on the plan.
Yes, yes, sir. There was a commitment to, we located where the floodplain analysis would, would need to happen. And in order to actually do an adequate floodplain analysis, the number of assumptions that would be in, in place now without having gone through county site plan review process, the Soil and Water Conservation District to make sure that we select the right land cover, seed mix, and all the, all the other parameters that need to go in and give the other folks room to, to comment. That's why the no rise, it was why the commitment to no rises essentially was a, covered all of that.
Yeah, I just don't think in accordance with 17-1-1.2, the zoning ordinance per CUP, that you haven't addressed whether it's detrimental to property in the neighborhood, in the surrounding neighborhood, based on the increase in runoff. You said that you were going to basically put it, you have a note on there that said you're going to address it later, basically. But there's nothing currently addressed with the application currently, in my view.
Can I, can I interject?
Yeah, sure.
I think what you're, the, the point you're raising, Mr. Killie, is what do we do, what, what are we capable of doing now where we are in the project versus where we need to be when we hopefully come before you for final site plan approval? There's a lot of stuff that has to be done. We haven't selected the panels, we haven't selected the racking system, we haven't, we haven't done the detailed geotechnical. All that has to be done. I think that's the point where the questions you raise and the information you're looking for is going to be provided. I don't know that we can do that now.
Yeah, I guess the scenario would be is that you basically take the, the total acreage of your site from a predeveloped CN value, and you take your ultimate development, make, take a percentage of what you anticipate those panels to be, basically, and you calculate what the difference in inflow and outflow hydrographs would be. You calculate that storage underneath of the curve, and that's the volume that's required in the ponds to hold back that runoff. And then you basically show the size of that facility. You're probably looking at maybe 30 to 40 hours worth of effort from an engineering perspective to do that, that effort. So based on looking at that, that's, I think, when we originally were looking at this ordinance, that's kind of what we were looking at, you know? The other, the other thing I would comment on is one of the items dealing with the roadways in the system there. One of the things that we asked for was an existing assessment, core samples of the existing road, if you're coming off an existing road. I don't know if, if that was evaluated or looked at.
I'm talking about core samples on Route 3.
Well, where, are you coming off an existing road to the site?
No, I'm, okay. No, we will have to build an accessory.
It'll be a proposed road that you're going to build?
Yeah, and it will be, you know, it'll have to be designed and engineered and, you know, it's going to have to handle heavy truck, traffic for construction, so.
Okay. That's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Price?
Yeah. You can go ahead.
Okay. Sir, you mentioned that the project would be sold to somebody else who will actually come in and build it. So you, so you'll take it up through all the approvals and site plan approval, and then somebody else will purchase it and actually build it? Is that, is that correct?
Yes. What we will do is permit the site. The interconnection agreement with Dominion, we'll have that signed and executed. We've got the lease agreement in place with the property owner. We'll secure the local permits, presumably the conditional use permit. And then the fourth, the fourth thing we would do would be obtain the permit by rule, which is the DEQ administered state-level permitting for a project like this that's below 150 megawatts. Once we have all those, those are the critical permits and approvals, we would then sell that, sell the project to one of the utilities in the state or a large solar developer. They would complete the construction. They would, in all likelihood, own and operate the plant.
Okay, let me just ask Sam, I don't know if this is typical of the industry. My, my understanding with, with Maroon was that they were actually going to build and operate the facility that they pitched to us. Was, was that correct? Was that my understanding correct with Maroon?
Yeah, I think that's the way they proposed it, yes.
All right. Does your, does your firm, North Ridge Resources, you have a track record with large-scale solar developments? I mean, do you have others that you have done the same sort of process with?
Yes, I actually have a slide that I didn't show, but let me, let me talk to that point. We've been doing solar development since 2016. We've developed projects in eight different counties. Our most recent project, this was, this was a project we self-developed in Palatana County, very similar to this project. 20 megawatts, 200-acre site, interconnection into the local distribution system, conditional use permit from Palatana County, permit by rule. We sold that project, North Ridge sold that project to Dominion June of last year. That project is now going through a review process with the State Corporation Commission, assuming it's approved. Dominion will build it, own it, operate it, and rate base it for, you know, the next 35 years. So that's a business model that's not uncommon in Virginia. We are not the only small developer that permits and then sells the projects. We just don't have the bandwidth or the skill set to do construction and operations and maintenance.
Okay.
There's, are there any number of developers that have utilized a similar approach very successfully?
All right. Just two more things. You showed a photograph of the view from the base of Hansbrough's Ridge. Would it be possible to get a view, a photograph of the view from up on Hansbrough's Ridge on the south end of that? Because that extra elevation will be what's important. Will you see any glare from those panels from up there?
Well, don't tell anybody, but I, I did take some pictures up there, although I wasn't supposed to be up there. The problem, when you go up on Hansbrough's Ridge, there's so many trees, you can't get a clear shot from the top of the ridge over toward the site without just literally looking at trees.
Yeah.
So that's the challenge I had. Otherwise, I would have put a picture in there of, of the site from the top of Hansbrough's Ridge.
Since you've been up there, would the, would your site have been visible from where you stood?
No, it is not visible from Hansbrough's Ridge. It is not visible.
All right. And then just one final thing. You had mentioned in your materials that you'd be willing, if asked, to increase the 200-foot buffer to a 250-foot buffer. Would a 250-foot buffer still give you the space to put up all the panels that you need to generate 26 megawatts?
Well, let me just clarify the point you make. We agreed to the 250-foot setback buffer where we are adjacent to the Stevensburg Agricultural and Forest District. Which is primarily in the southeast corner of our site. So I believe that's being discussed as a change in your ordinance. I don't believe it's currently a requirement, but we're willing to increase that setback to 250 feet.
But you could do that and not reduce your megawatt production, right?
We believe so, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's all from me. Thanks.
Okay. Katie?
So like Mr. Price was saying, you haven't sold this to anyone yet. Has Amazon or Dominion contacted you about it?
No. Well, let me, certainly not Amazon. We have, since we did sell a project to Dominion last year, they've talked to us about other projects that we might have in the pipeline. And I've mentioned to them that I am working on a project in Culpeper County. Beyond that, they don't know anything about this project.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else?
Who?
All right. So I am trying to weed through all of this and look at it, and I didn't see a siting plan in here. So do you plan to provide one? And you know what that is?
I'm not sure. Siting, site...
You're going to buy us a fire truck.
Oh.
Sorry, no, no. I'm only kidding.
Siting agreement, okay.
Yeah, well, we have siting agreements available to us, so I, I didn't see anything in here about that, and I was wondering, did you plan to do one?
We are willing to talk with you about that, yes.
Okay, so at what stage? Because I'm not ready to wait till the final site plan for all this stuff. The next time you come back, maybe you'll have some of that in the paperwork?
Well, we'll suggest that you speak with staff and, and directing you as, as far as that goes.
Yeah, okay. Well, we're certainly willing to do that, as I mentioned in my presentation. What that means in terms of, other than the revenue, the revenue share approach, to be determined. This is a relatively small project.
Right. It is very small, I agree, and I, just trying to make sure that I understand clearly that we...
I can't help you with your fire truck for the cell phone, I'm sorry.
I didn't think you could because it's too small. But I, it's kind of what we're, I didn't see it in here, so I just thought that we should ask. So I'm asking. I, and then when you denude, and your engineer was talking about denuding, the property is already timbered, right? So we denuded this property, and you're going to compact it in order to be able to, you know, the vegetative coverage that was talked about, and you're going to compact 250 acres? Are you going to do that after all the stumpages removed and everything? No, right? No. All right. So in playing off of what he was asking you for, when you come back with the additional information, I think we probably want to address and make sure that we are going to meet the ordinance that we've designed and check in that box, too.
Yeah, I, one of the things we, we know we have to do is put a little bit more meat on the bone on the vegetation plant, which includes the ground cover and soil... on the bone on the vegetation plant, which includes the ground cover and soil amendments and things of that sort.
Yeah. So, a lot of the, the missing pieces also have, like, well, we want to wait to site plan. So, in general, because, and it's because you're flipping it, I understand, it's just more dollars you're putting into it to get it to our checklist, but we do have that ordinance that we just did, and we want to make sure that A goes with A and you have your checklist done, so that's the only comments I have.
Well, let me simply say that we will comply with the ordinance.
Right.
I think the question is, what does that mean in the case of some of the studies and some of the requirements of the ordinance? Is that now or, as we discussed, is it now or is it at site plan approval? There are certain things we think we can do now, there are others that we would, you know, want to, we would argue should be done at site plan, really have to be done at site plan.
All right, well, we're just trying to follow the ordinance that we just adopted, so I just want to make sure. Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Okay. Is there...
I have a question, I know that, and you had brought that up intentionally, that you're not Greenwood. I just worry about the, the water runoff on two adjacent sites so close to each other that it would impact all the neighbors that are surround. I think, did you mention that there were three neighbors that were part of, part of your deal, or Greenwood was, was that one?
They're part of Greenwood.
They're part of Greenwood, no. Do you have anybody in those property areas willing to vouch for you guys? Or, like, you talked about going to Len Park and meeting with neighbors, were anyone receptive? Were they, they were positive or were they negative towards having a solar field near there?
To a person, they were very positive. Now, maybe that's just the group we had that night, I don't know, but we have talked with the neighbors, and Mr. Kelsey is here, Dave Kelsey, who I think at some point would like to say something, but he met with the neighbors, and, you know, he could address their response, their reactions. But generally, at least from the neighbor's perspective, it's been, it certainly hasn't been negative, so I take that as, you know, as, as positive.
And then I noticed, one of the pictures, you are actually on Salubia's property. Are they in agreement that this should be built?
I don't know. I have not, we have not, I've not spoken to Salubia. There's a new manager there now, I don't, I don't know her name.
How was that picture obtained? Did you guys go on property and take the picture?
Yeah, we, we, we met, we talked with them first and got permission to own the property.
And, and you cannot see that from that ridgeline?
No.
All right, thank you. Oh, and one more, sorry, one more question. Permit by rule, I am unfamiliar with that term. So, that's something that's required by the state now? Is that new? Is that, what, what is...
I know, it's been in place, geez, five, six years. It was, it was legislated, legislature set this parameter. It's for any project, any renewable project, wind, solar, less than one hundred and fifty megawatts, unless it's owned by a utility, in which case, the utility has to go to the State Corporation Commission to get a CPCN, so...
So, it's, it's not owned by a utility yet?
No. So, in that case, we have to get a, we have to get a permit by rule. But it's a, it's a well-established process, there's a checklist of fifteen things you have to go through, you have to have a public hearing, it's, I've done four or five of them myself, so it's, it's a well-understood process.
And you've met all their checklists?
Not yet, but we would. You have to in order for them to issue the permit.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just have a nuts and bolts question. I'm familiar with the property, I was invited to come down Mountain View Road and, and go down the creek on the other side. I'll speak for you, the buffer with the native timber is thick, I mean, a lot of it's very thick and blocks a lot. I noticed you write buffers are between one hundred and three hundred feet. So, are the fences at a max, minimum of two hundred feet from the lot lines, from the exterior of the project? Or, the panels run up to two hundred feet?
Solar equipment.
Solar equipment?
Yes.
Okay. So, say when you have a hundred feet and it's a little scant, who makes the call of, I'm gonna add additional Leland Cypress, especially along that southern edge just off Mountain View Road to the east? There'll be more planning than elsewhere. So, do you all make that call, or does the zoning administrator make the call, or...
Well, I, you're right, the, the southern part of the boundary is gonna need some fill-in. You're, you're right. We'll submit a landscaping plan based on the site conditions.
Okay.
That'll be reviewed and approved by the county. So, I suppose the answer is, in the end, the county is the final arbiter.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I still want to make a comment.
Okay.
And, and, this is not a, a technical, I'm just asking that you, you help us. This is a big proj, for us, it's a big project to review. We really need to get this documentation, both in soft copy and hard copy, at least two weeks before we're gonna see you again. Also, I, I think we need to get a little bit better organized. If, if we have something that's been changed from this time to the next time, we'd like to identify red lines, so, so we don't have to go, you know, running around looking for them. We have exhibits in here, but nothing was labeled. It wasn't exhibit A, B, and C, it just said C exhibit for this such and such. So, it will help us immensely if you can better organize this, and again, provide it to us in a timely manner.
Well, one of my thing, my to-do list is to get with Sam and talk about exactly what our next deliverable needs to look like. I think I have a pretty good sense, but that's my sense, I need, you know, I need validation from planning staff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. At this time, we open a public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this application, raise your hand and be recognized by the chair. Yes. Yes, sir. Tell me about it.
Good evening again. My name is David.
Try to speak into that if you can, and that one even moves, though.
Can you hear me?
There you go, that's good.
Okay. My name's David Kelsey. My father bought Sherwood Farm in the mid-fifties, and I grew up in Culpeper County, and that was my high school, right there. So, I've been here for a while, and the, we, Sherwood is a family farm, it's not a hobby farm. We have to make money. And we've got some good soils, and then we've got a patch of blackjack soil. And you asked why the solar panels are in that direction? It's because the soil is blackjack. And it, you can make a crop grow on it, but I don't think you can make tax payment on it, let alone make a mortgage payment. So, it's just soil that doesn't grow very well. Anyway, we'd like to put this solar project on the blackjack soil, which will give us enough revenue that we can keep the rest of it as an agricultural farm with crops and pretty trees and all that stuff. This will provide a revenue service source to keep the farm afloat. I will say this, that Culpeper has put in acres and acres, acres of subdivisions, and those, those acres are gone. There'll never be anything but houses. We're gonna put in, with your approval, we'd like to put in a solar panels, and in thirty-five to forty years, it becomes agricultural land or remains agricultural land. And that's not true of, of a lot of the other uses, and you, including the industrial land, which in this county is pretty good dirt and is valuable as industrial land. Blackjack's not. Blackjack's just blackjack. I've worked with Ken for about three years now, North Ridge Solar, and I have found him to be knowledgeable, helpful, and honest. And I endorse Ken totally. This project would be good for the county, be good for the state, be good for the country, and good for the planet. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
My name is Deezy Campbell, and I live in Stevensburg, and my grandparents sold them Sherwood Farm in the fifties, and I visited it a couple of times when I was much younger. Please deny this case, especially with the application fitting puzzle-like pieces growing into a large-scale utility complex, and I'm against that in principle. The comments from our local Culpeper County Soil and Water Conservation Agency pointed out an incomplete and insufficient application. Why does this keep happening? Comments from the Piedmont Environmental Council reinforce the fact that all solar panels, steel posts with miles of connecting wires, junctions, and other equipment are part of this impervious surface that DEQ has finally recognized and needs immediate and critical attention. Also, it's imperative to alleviate downstream and adjacent landowner concerns about flooding. This area is natural watershed of a rapahaanic river. Excess water has real tendency of backing up like an emptying tub or a clogged toilet. The comments from your third-party review are much appreciated. Soils are also a problem in this part of the county. SDI noted the, the high erodibility rate and low soil loss intolerance, which affects land disturbance as well as stormwater runoff, as well as actually citing the actual components for the facility. Water goes where it wants to go, it'll find a way. I didn't bring it to me, to the podium, but my newest favorite, favorite book is called Water Always Wins by Erica Giles. It's subtitled Thriving in an Age of Drought and Deluge. It just came out. Please deny this project.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good evening.
My name is Susan Ralston, and I live in Stevensburg, and I respectfully request that the North Ridge application be denied. While they do, while the application is under the three-hundred-acre limit, it is directly adjacent to Greenwood, which was approved in 2018, and now, five years later, still has not been built. This is an end run around the three-hundred-acre limit and only makes a very contentious and controversial project bigger. It should be denied. It wasn't too long ago that we went through the site plan phase for Greenwood, and they still haven't broken ground. We don't even know if Greenwood can satisfy the conditions set at the site plan hearing, and we don't know what the long-term ramifications of that project are going to be to our community, to our waterways, and the downstream farms. It just doesn't make sense to make the Greenwood site, which is huge already, make that site bigger. There are a number of questions and concerns in the staff analysis that we've talked about tonight, and we've been through cases before, when recommendations are made by the planning commission and the staff to have the developer fix an application, and we've said time and again that we should not be helping the developer, schooling them along the way so they get another bite, another bite, another bite at the apple. And if an application doesn't meet county requirements, it should be denied. Otherwise, it's just a waste of time, they're gonna keep coming back. We have to keep coming back. Deny this application, and any application that feels, fails to meet our standards, and if they want to cure defects, they can resubmit. But in the meantime, I respectfully request that you deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes.
Looking at the clock, I'll be very quick.
Oh, take it.
My name is Laura Kelsey, and I'm a Culpeper County landowner, as you probably know. I just want to make three points on this particular plan, which, by the way, is, just to comment, it is completely separate, separate from Greenwood Solar, it is, has nothing to do with it. Viewscape, I've listened to a lot of hearings and things, that's something that people always bring up as a problem. There's no problem here with this particular project on Viewscape. There are no neighbors who will see it. I mean, if you fly over, maybe you can see it, but that, we don't see that as a problem. The second point is, it is not going on agricultural prime land. It is going on very poor soil that, you know, in thirty-five years will let, give you a crop of timber that will barely cover your costs for planting it in the first place. And so, it's, it's just not a way to, to make money agriculturally. So, we think that we need to adjust our crop. We're not gonna be able to make money on alfalfa or hay or any, or corn or anything, or beans on that, so we're going to solar, because that particular piece of land will not give us the income we need to keep our family farm that we desperately want to keep. So, ideally, this is a pretty darn good location for solar. If you have to put it somewhere, and we, we know we need to move into other energy resources, then this is a good place. In fact, it probably can meet, oh, I understand, it's a new comprehensive plan, I think it can meet all the criteria better than any I've seen out there, and I hope you'll vote for it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Mark Wilks with the Stevensburg District. My family and I moved here about fifteen years ago now, and we came here, my wife and I and our nine children, and today we are thirty-five, thirty-six of us, we just had a baby born. And we came here to make Culpeper our home. We bought ninety acres in Brandy Station and started to farm it, and most of the land is good land, but there's some marginal land, as described by the, the owner of the property, gentleman or lady who was just up here. We've been able to take our land, and we've since bought two-hundred more acres, some good land, some marginal land, but have taken it into a property and are farming it, and now supports nine families. How you care for the land is, is how you make it produce for you, and there's a way to care for land and make it produce. Solar panels are not a good use for farmland. This land here is agriculture, it's zone A1, not industrial. And part of the motivation, I thought, behind the, the restrictions we put on with the ordinances was to restrict developers from wanting to come in and develop agricultural land and put it, to make it industrial. There's three main points I want to make, this is, and this is A1, not industrial, and solar is industrial. The applicant said he does not have a buyer, so he is an investor, and he doesn't have that, he's looking to turn a profit on this, nothing wrong with it, I think it's great to turn a profit, but that's his whole motivation, it's not for the betterment of Culpeper or its citizens, it's to make a profit on it. He could, in theory, sell it to Greenwood if he chose to. The second issue, I think, see that solar, the only reason that they are viable is because they are subsidized. You take away the subsidies that solar has, and nobody would invest in it, only because of subsidies. When those subsidies stop, we could have a real problem on our hands. And then the third issue is decommissioning, and it's still an issue. The applicant actually mentioned that it's not an art. I mean, it's an art, not a science. That makes me a little concerned. I'd rather have it be a science, if we're gonna look at decommissioning this in thirty-five years. In fact, there's a, in doing research for this, I found that in Arizona, I think, is in Mexico, I can't remember, but there was a billion-dollar solar project. in New Mexico, I can't remember, but there was a billion-dollar solar project that ended up having, it was almost complete, but it no longer became economically viable, and they had to shut it down. And now, they're having to decommission it. And there's not enough money to decommission it. And there's a big battle going over how they're going to go about doing that. So, you're right, it's an art, not a science. And I would like to see this not go any further than tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Corey Clinton, Stevensburg District. And, you know, when we think about the journey we went through to do the comprehensive plan and the solar ordinance, there was a lot of effort, a lot of effort put in by the community, by you folks, and it was just a lot of effort was put into that. So, we have this plan now, and now, we have this application come in that doesn't meet the requirements, and just a lot of gray area. To me, this seems like a slam dunk. We put forth this effort. We don't want to, we don't want to go through this route of multiple meetings, multiple things. Try this. We make your adjustments to meet our requirements. When we have documentation now that the community has put in, we have it on record, if the application does not meet the requirements, it should be black and white. No, answer's no. So, I respectfully request that you guys deny this application, and maybe they can resubmit it that it will meet the comprehensive plan and the solar ordinance. That's simple.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm a former middle school teacher, so I probably talk really loud. You have to tell me if I'm talking too loud. Is it all right? Okay, my name is Paige Wessel. I'm part-owner of Sherwood Farm. And I would like to request that you not deny it, that this is a new process. They're trying to meet the requirements, the restrictions, the criteria. They're doing their best. This is a family farm, and it's incorporated in the farm. Nobody can see it but us and a few neighbors who are very positive. And I'm just going to request that you not deny it. To think about it, it's a good thing, like my Uncle David said, it's good for Culpeper, it's good for, it's good for our farm. It helps us, it's going to help us pay, with your approval, it's going to help us pay for the farm. We have beautiful views. People talk about them all the time. Somebody's got to pay for those views. And if, somebody's got to pay for it. And so, I respectfully ask you to consider it. Give us some, give us another chance. Like I say, this is new. This is new. It's new for you guys, it's new for them. So, thank you for your time, and I appreciate the work that you're putting in.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, once again, Don H, Stevensburg District. The applicant just admitted here on tape that he trespassed on private property Hansbrough Ridge. It's proof that the applicant is comfortable with breaking laws and as it comes to Culpeper County. No applicant is going to come here and tell us how, what and what we should not have in our ordinance. You either comply, or you go home. I'm sorry you have to review another central's application, one that is in no way, shape, and form compliance with Culpeper Comprehensive Plan, Solar Policy, or Culpeper's ordinance. This application is infested with violations and oversights more than I can talk about tonight. I'm sorry you must waste your valuable time in reviewing applications like this. It's a waste of our tax dollars, and it takes away from the more important issues that you are faced with here in Culpeper. The Greenwood site is where, the Greenwood Solar Site is where this application is attempting to attach itself to. This project is the exact same as Greenwood. Don't be fooled. If the Greenwood Solar Site application were before you tonight, it would be rejected because it would, it will also be rejected by the Board of Supervisors because it does not meet our comprehensive plan and ordinance. If it wasn't for the coronavirus, the Greenwood site would not have been extended. The Board of Supervisors approved the Greenwood site, but later decided that they would not approve its renewal. So, therefore, this Greenwood site would be in violation. Your job here tonight is to review this application, not to advise, not to revise the application. Your job is to approve it or deny it solely based on its merit, and its merit alone. It lacks all merit. It's the view of many Culpeper residents that this application gives insight to the applicant. It shows you that they aren't interested in Culpeper's standards or guidelines. They clearly are making up their own set of rules, which are listed in this application. There is no desire to abide or to adhere to our comprehensive plan, solar policy, or ordinance. Don't forget, these solar power plants are funded by your hard-earned federal tax dollars. Another prime example of wasted federal funds. Money not going towards healthcare, money not going towards school programs, money not going to Social Security. Simply a waste of federal tax dollars, as you all know. The power generated from this site will not be used locally, and it will not reduce your electric costs. It's confirmed that these solar projects increase your electric bill because the upgrades to the electric infrastructure. Upgrades to the electric infrastructures gets passed on to all the electric users, which are you and me and all the Culpeper County residents. Revenue sharing is a joke. Don't even think about getting a dime from these developers. Don't believe me, ask Spotsylvania and all the issues that they are having, not getting the money that they were promised. If this applicant wasn't ready, they should have, should not have scheduled the meeting tonight. They didn't, they don't need no more time because this application is riddled with violations. Please deny this application tonight and not waste any more of your time, not waste any more of my time, and not waste more of taxpayer's money evaluating an application that is riddled with violations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Declare the public hearing closed. We have heard many things, many comments tonight in reference to the application that's before us. I respect it. You know, all that's been said, and a lot has been said on both sides. And it was good to actually see the applicant have the landowners here, is what I want to say, so that we have a look at both sides of it. And, you know, I've said many times how I feel about land rights. And whenever we speak of against something that, you know, we feel is intruding on us, we're actually going against the person who actually owns it, you know, the rights of someone else. And we have to always look at those and try to find a happy median, I think, between these. We talk about the new ordinances that we have. I mean, you know, this first time, I wasn't really expecting them to have everything. It wasn't near like what we had experienced before. But this ordinance for us is new. And we're, you know, being able to test it and see, you know, whether it gets us the results that we want. We are definitely, and I'm sure from all the commissioners, we're definitely not against solar and that's, or, you know, these types of things. So, but again, our position is to look at the ordinance, you know, give everyone a fair chance, you know, at it. No, I don't expect anyone to be coming back five and 10 times like we used to do, okay? Because I think we have it more fine-tuned, and we spent much time in this to get to where we are today. There's a checklist, and, you know, I'm working on something now where I have to turn in some information, and it's a checklist, and I'm looking at the checklist, and I'm trying to make sure that I have everything right. But it's important that we look at the rights of all the citizens, all the landowners, especially when you have something that seems to really fit, you know. I've heard a lot of different things about solar in the past, and I've been educated, and some of you here have truly educated me, and I respect you, you know, give you the utmost and to fight for what you, you know, really believe in. And the other side is doing the same thing as we, you know, get to see that. But when I see something that's out where I can see it, no one else can see it, it's on my land, basically, yes, make sure the criterias are right, you know, I follow all of the guidelines that are required. Once I do that, then I, you know, I feel that I've, you know, done due diligence and get into where I need to be. But I wanted to, when I heard the other landowner say, "I want to keep my farm," and I think that's exactly what our whole intent is in any of these situations. When we, I heard someone speak about subsidies before. Well, you know, I know, thanks to the government, that is something that is, that a lot of us get, you know, in different situations, when you're trying to start a new business or different things like that, farms. I know a lot of farmers who actually thank God that they were because of the different conditions that we could find ourselves in. But when I look at this whole package, is, the staff has said too that, you know, this is new to us, and we looking at it and some different, you know, things. And I like the idea that we would defer it, is what I would, you know, like to see in this particular situation is, and that's just, you know, my end of it, is that this applicant seemed to have a lot of things in order and not intruding, you know, on the neighbors and, you know, everything that's around him. So, you know, I, my heart is open to both, you know, when it comes there. But I just look at this ordinance, and it gives us that opportunity. This is what you submitted the first time? This is what you heard at the planning commissioners' meeting? This what you heard from the neighbors? Now, when we, you know, when this returns, we don't want a lot of excuses. When it comes the next time, everything should be in line because that was the whole purpose of our hard work and trying to get this ordinance as tight as we could get it so that it would be the best for both sides. And that's the way we have to look at it, is both sides. So, I wanted to share that, you know, with the commissioners. I gave you all an opportunity to talk, you know, earlier, and I've, a lot of good questions and comments that had come up. Some we were, should be addressed now, but there were some that we brought up that is further in the process. But, you know, my feeling and my vote would be to defer it. So, at this time? Got any other comments that you'd like to make?
Yeah, I have a comment. I would say this is a strong-
I didn't want to put you to sleep with it.
I was almost asleep.
Okay. I heard someone say that earlier, but-
I think this is a strong application and a location, a unique location, made to order for our new comp plan, ordinance, and our policy. And I move that the commission defer this case request, U 2236-221, conditional use permit for utility-scale solar generation facility to our next regularly-scheduled hearing, meeting. Did I say all that? I hope so.
We have a motion on, we have a motion on forward. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'm seconded. But is the next meeting another time for the applicant to get all the information?
Good question.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? And we take what you have said into that discussion mode.
No, no, I was going to say the same thing.
Is 30 days that you bring it back?
Mr. Chairman, while Mr. Neiman comes up, I want to address that 30-day issue because it's a lot sooner than 30 days, just, you know, it'd be 30 days for the meeting. But we also need to have everything at least two weeks in advance of the meeting. That puts you at April 26. It's April 12th right now. We need time to review it.
Okay. So, May what?
So, to me, to Commissioner Burton's next regularly-scheduled meeting, he's on target. I do think that it should be deferred. That was the staff recommendation.
Okay.
We have up to three regularly-scheduled meetings, the way our code is written, to make a recommendation unless it's mutually agreed to by the applicant to go beyond that time. I think it's going to be tough to do it before May. I'm not speaking for the applicant. They've done a really good job of getting things, in my opinion, to this date after the ordinance changed on them. But it's, that's a tight turnaround, so.
So, can you, may I ask the applicant? Can you do, do you want to do two meetings, 60 days?
Or you buy it?
June. We would need, we would need to render, the planning commission, unless agreed to further, would need to render a decision.
All right. Thank you very much. So, we have a motion, we have a second, that motion to-
I need, I need to amend the motion to extend the deferral to, what did we say?
June meeting.
June, to the regularly-scheduled June meeting.
They're probably moving second. Any other discussion? Being that all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
I have Mr. Quincy, Ms. Thornhill, and Ms. Ream here opposed.
So, we will be part of this, uh, June.
Mr. Chairman?
Sam, do you have anything else?
I'm ready for Commissioner Ream's motion.
Move adjourned.
Do we have a second? All in favor, all right? All opposed, like I said.